Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 City Council Meeting of November 6, 2019. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Parlier.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
And Councilmember Sullivan.
Well, welcome. It's so great to see a packed house. We're so glad that you're engaging in the civic process. We have some very special guests here this evening, and it's our pleasure today to be Teen Student Government Day. And these teens have been following and shadowing city staff throughout the day, and they're participating in tonight's council meeting. And so it's going to be our privilege to introduce them. And so council members and staff will just say their name and their school, and then each one will have the opportunity to talk about their college goal, their career goal, and one more thing. So it is my pleasure to be able to introduce our new mayor tonight, Dahlia Keo, who is a senior at Frontier High School.
I'll introduce you and your new mayor.
I hope to attend UC San Diego to study biochemistry, and I run cross-country and track and field at Frontier High School. Thank you.
Welcome. And then number Rivera.
Hello. My name is Logan Hammond. I am a senior at Bakersfield High School. After high school, I plan on attending Fresno State and majoring in political science, become a legislative assistant, and I am also senior class president at VHS.
Ward three.
Hello. I'm Nathan Smith II. I go to Bakersfield Christian High School. My college that I hope to attend is the Air Force Academy. My major is undeclared, and I'm a three-sport athlete.
Ward three.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Candace Bishop. I'm a proud North High star. After high school, I plan to attend UCLA and major in biology, and after that, attend medical school, eventually wanting to become a pediatrician. And outside of school, I am a part of the Four Dimension Dream Builders Program on Team Dignity Health.
Welcome. Vice Mayor.
It is my honor to introduce Gerald DeJesus from Ridgeview High School.
Hello. My name is Gerald DeJesus. I attend Ridgeview High School as a senior. After high school, I want to attend UC Northridge and major in kinesiology with the emphasis in dance. A career goal, my career goal is to become a physical therapist slash athletic trainer for pro sports and teams and dancers. For school activities, I was in ASB for two and a half years. Last year, I was the junior class representative. I am now the ASB president. I am the National Honor Society Vice President, Student Site Council President, Drama Club Media Specialist, best-behind Honor Society member, lead crew commissioner, rally emcee, and a part of the drama department for four years.
Welcome. Ward five.
Hi. My name is Charisma Ariola. I attend Foothill High School. I hope to attend UCLA with a major in chemistry and a minor in neuroscience. My career goal is to become a pediatric neurosurgeon and actually work here at Memorial Hospital in Bakersfield. And another fact about me is that I have been a part of the National Future Farmers Organization for the past four years.
And now ward five.
I'd like to introduce Alexia Drulius from Garsus.
Hello. My name is Alexia Drulius. I am a Garsus Memorial High RAM. I am looking to attend UCLA with a major in economics after I finish high school. As for my career, I would like to be a future CEO of my own company. And one little thing about myself, I am a recently achieved Gold Award Girl Scout, and for my Gold Award project, I dedicated over 80 hours to service at the Community Action Partnership of Kern Friendship House.
Welcome. Wow. Madam City Attorney.
My name is Michaela Ramirez, and I go to West High School. I plan on attending UCLA and majoring in neuroscience and becoming a trauma surgeon. And one fact about me is I play tennis at West High.
Welcome. Assistant City Manager.
Hello, everyone. My name is Chase McLewis, and I go to East Bakersfield High. I plan on attending any UC or private university and studying political science with hopes to become a prosecutor. One little known fact about me, I am the ASB president at East.
Welcome. And our Development Services Director.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alexis Hill, and I am from Highland High School. My college goal is to attend San Diego State and major in psychology. Some interesting facts about me is that I served as my sophomore class president of 2020, my junior class president of 2020, and I am now ASB president.
Public Works Director.
Hello. My name is Sarah Patel. I attend Stockdale High School. My college goal is USC. My career goal is to be a sports medicine physician. And one fact about me is that I'm the junior coordinator for the Jingle Bell Club, which provides a Christmas experience to underprivileged kids in Kern County.
Welcome. And we have one more young man right here. Go ahead.
Hi. I'm Alexis Morales, and I attend Kern Valley High School, and I hope to go to CSU Northridge and major in family and consumer sciences education. And one interesting thing about me is I'm a fourth-year member of the Career Technical Student Organization, Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, and recently retired state secretary for the organization.
Welcome. And we have a new city clerk here tonight, don't we?
Mayor, I'd like to introduce Kalen McElrath from North High School.
Good evening. I'm Kalen McElrath from North High School, and for my college goal, I plan on attending UC Davis to major in history and become a history teacher. And one extra fact about me is I am also ASB president at North High School.
Welcome to all of you, and I know our city is in good hands this evening. We have the pleasure this evening of having Pastor Andy Prince of Grace Baptist offer the invocation. Pastor Andy also is co-chair of Kern Leadership Alliance, that works together with our community to take on the most pressing needs of our community with other faith leaders. And so he's going to lead us in the invocation. Following that, we have the pleasure of some, of having the pledge led by some superstars. So this evening, we have the Highland Future Farmers team here. They went to Nationals, the National Future Farmers of America competition, and they took home first place for Bakersfield. Their booth showcasing California agriculture products. We're so proud of you. And congratulations Emily Gonzalez, Austin Helms, Hannah Ballard, and Havana Silver, and of course, to their teacher, Amber Carter. So at this point, would you all please stand as we have Pastor Andy Prince lead us in the invocation.
Mayor, City Council, city officials, administrators, thank you for your service to our city. You lead us in challenging times, and we are thankful for your concern and care for the people, and so grateful for a city that's not ashamed to say in God we trust. And we pray that as you make decisions, that you will know that we are praying for you. In 1 Corinthians 13:13, it says, "And now abide faith, hope, love, these three; but the greatest of these is love." And it's my honor to open us this meeting with that thought in mind. So let's pray. Father, we thank you for the people that make up Bakersfield, California, and we ask for you to bless our city, and we know that you love us with an everlasting love, so much so that you gave your only begotten Son, Jesus, to die so that each person in our city may have eternal hope with you and experience life transformation through your Spirit if they'll simply place their faith in you. As we declare in our city, in you, oh God, we need to trust. Lord, I pray that you will give our city council and those who work for our city great faith to trust in you, that they will not lean on their own understanding, but that they will not make decisions based upon your wisdom and your ways. Father, I pray that you will be with our city leaders, that they will lead our city with hope, that we will have people in Bakersfield that will be prosperous and have great employment opportunities to make provisions for their family. Lord, that you would give us a safe and a caring environment to dwell, and Lord, that you would bring a brighter and a better future for the next generation. And Lord, we pray that you will fill our city council and the people of Bakersfield with love, that we can discuss the issues of our day with civility and kindness, that we can care for our fellow citizens and look after their physical, emotional, and spiritual needs, and that you will bring us in unity as we seek to build a city that can be an example to others where your love is manifested and flows from the people of Bakersfield. We ask today for your wisdom, for your faith, for your hope, and your love, and we ask that you would bless our city and bless this meeting for the glory of God, and we ask that all this would be done in the name of our Savior and our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Randy. And now Highland Future Farmers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. I'm going to come down. Highland Future Farmers, if you stay up there. And Ms. Carter, go ahead and offer a few comments while I make my way down.
Well, I just want to thank everyone for this opportunity and for recognizing our students. This was not an easy feat. We faced some challenges as we went into Nationals. It took our students about, I would say somewhere between 75 and 80 hours total just to design and put together the booth. They built everything themselves, and we actually faced some issues when we got to National Convention because it seemed like our total booth was demolished when it got shipped. So they actually ended up rebuilding their entire booth when we arrived in Indianapolis, Indiana last week. So to face all of the challenges that we faced and for them to ultimately still end up winning National Convention was a huge, a huge feat for us. So I'm incredibly proud of the four students plus one that we're missing tonight that are standing behind me. It was tremendous for them, and it's actually the first national win for Highland FFA. So thank you so much for this opportunity tonight.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. And it's my honor to be able to present the Mayor's Medal to each of you. Congratulations. Congratulations, number one representing Bakersfield. Congratulations. If you're a parent, or a relative, or anybody else who came here to cheer these people on, go ahead and stand, and we'll give you a hand. So, Madam Mayor, would you please share with us the guidelines for this evening?
Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. In keeping with council policy, council members aren't allowed to send or receive electronic communications during the meeting. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but isn't allowed at other times during the meeting. For safety reasons and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chambers. Thank you for your cooperation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, I'm turning off over homelessness to you tonight. She's going to take care of it by midnight. Thank you so much, and it's a joy again to have all of you here this evening. Madam Clerk, would you please read the first item?
Under Presentations, we have a proclamation to Kern County Homeless Collaborative Youth Committee Chair Allison Seal and members Victoria Limbean, Reyna Perez de Burbank, and Andrea Caldwell, declaring Homeless Youth Awareness Month in Bakersfield during November 2019.
Tonight, we're focusing, I think many of you are here, on homelessness, and we have our team from the Kern County Homeless Collaborative, the Youth Committee. It's my honor to be able to present this proclamation. Whereas each year, more than 2.5 million children across the country experience at least one night of homelessness, and whereas Kern County Superintendent of Schools has identified more than 5,000 children that qualify as homeless, whereas Kern County's 2019 point in time count identified 100 homeless youth ages 18 to 21, with 60% of them unsheltered. Whereas local organizations, including the Kern County Homeless Collaborative Homeless Youth Outreach Committee, are working to promote youth well-being and educate the public on the potential dangers youth experience while homeless. Now therefore, I, Karen Go, Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, do hereby proclaim November 2019 as National Homeless Youth Awareness Month in our city, and urge all citizens to support organizations that provide services and resources to help homeless youth. It's my honor to be able to present this to you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, City Council. Once again, to recognizing this month of November as our National Homeless Youth Awareness Month. Very importantly, thank you very much to all of our community agencies and partners that are committed daily sheltering and providing supportive services to our homelessness. Along with losing their home, community, friends, and routines, as well as their sense of stability and safety, many of homeless youth are also victims of trauma. While trying to survive the streets, youth are exposed to countless dangers with increased likelihood of substance abuse, early parenthood, impulsivity, depression, post-traumatic stress disorder, and high risk of being targets of human trafficking. A few, during this month, we acknowledge those children, youth, and family experiencing homelessness. Kern County is a wonderful and caring community, and together we can eliminate the need for food and shelter, a basic human right. Together, we are stronger, and there are many ways that we can help, including acknowledging the cost, like you said, advocating, contributing, and redirecting those in need of our community, of community resources. Thank you very much. Yes. My name is Reyna Burbank, and I am with the Spirit, and I work with former foster youth. You want to just...
Hello. I'm Victoria Limbean. I'm with GBLA, Greater Bakersfield Legal Assistant.
Hello. Rolando Hernandez, Kern County Superintendent of Schools.
And I'm Andrea Caldwell. I represent Stepping Stone's Youth Development Program. Thank you so much. Let's take a photo together.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next presentation, please. See, the mayor messes up every now and then.
A proclamation to O2 seekers of Bakersfield Support Group Leader, Deann DeeDee Towell, and Member Raymond Mars, recognizing Alpha-1 Antitrypsin Deficiency Awareness Month in Bakersfield during November 2019.
You know, we hear about cancer, we hear about heart disease, but there are conditions that are not talked about very frequently, and this is one of them. So it is my honor tonight to be able to issue the following proclamation. Whereas Alpha-1 is one of the most common serious hereditary disorders in the world and can result in life-threatening lung disease in adults and liver disease in both children and adults, and whereas Alpha-1 has been identified in nearly all populations and individuals who carry a single deficient gene and may pass that gene on to their children, and whereas it often takes an average of five doctors and seven years from the time symptoms appear before proper diagnosis is made, and that can, the diagnosis can be made by a simple blood test, whereas it's important to increase awareness and detection of this serious hereditary and misdiagnosed disorder. Now therefore, I, Karen Go, Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, do hereby proclaim November 2019 as Alpha-1 Awareness Month in our city, and urge all citizens and medical professionals to increase their understanding about the Alpha-1 Disorder, early detection, and treatment options for those affected by this condition. It's my honor to be able to present this proclamation to you, and if you would make comments and introduce your colleagues, please.
Well, my name is, my name is Raymond Mars, and as you know, I've got Alpha-1. DeeDee right here, DeeDee Towell, she's our support group leader. She has Alpha-1. Robin Johnson, she's got Alpha-1 also. And the biggest thing about it is years ago, how they could tell if you had it or not, they would take a nice long needle about like that, and they'd go diving for arterial blood gas. And believe me, that hurt. So turning around and seeing how things are today, a couple, a couple little drops of blood being sent off, and to find out if you have it or you don't have it, that is a major step forward. For all, for us, all we do is, every day is Alpha-1 Antitrypsin Deficiency Awareness Day. I do thank you for your time. God bless you, and thank you, Mayor Go.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So the way that Alpha-1 is inherited is you receive two genes from both parents. If you've got one alpha gene on your mom's side and one on your dad's side, more than likely, you're going to be a recipient of two bad genes. Your siblings can also inherit genes from your parents, but one sibling may end up completely normal. There's different types of genotypes. All three, well, actually, DeeDee and I are a ZZ genotype, whereas Ray, you were an MZ, right?
MZ, yeah.
An MZ. So in that regard, Ray ended up receiving a bad gene from one parent, whereas both DeeDee and I with kind of worse genes. I mean, Ray received a lung transplant. DeeDee and I have not yet been listed. My lung function is currently 30%. What's yours? So yeah, so mine's 30%. I've just not been listed as a recipient for a transplant yet, but I'm sorry, what? So in order to keep the progression of our lung disease at bay on a weekly contingency, we have to receive a blood plasma donation, and it takes 90 people, or nine, I'm sorry, 900 people per year for infusions for us on a, for the rest of our lives. I mean, it's a weekly, a weekly thing. It's easy. It's a, it's a simple blood test. If you've got asthma that's been undiagnosed from the time of birth, get tested, ask your doctors about Alpha-1 Antitrypsin deficiency, because so often, it goes undiagnosed, whereas with me, it was years of, you've just got asthma, just the Aaron Bakersfield is bad. That was never the case. It's a genetic disease, and if you've got undiagnosed asthma that seems to be progressing, please get tested. It's imperative. Thank you.
Thank you so much for raising our awareness, and we wish you all the best. Thank you for being here this evening. Madam Clerk, please read the next item.
Public Statements.
All statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per topic. And we'll, at this point, we'll allow them to leave just for a minute. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statements, please give those to the clerk. She'll give copies to the council. Please avoid any behavior that disrupts the meeting. We're very interested and concerned with your issues. Due to the public notice of the Brown Act, the council can't take action or engage when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. If you're here this evening on hearing items 10A or 10B, now isn't the time to speak. You'll be given an opportunity when we call those items later on in the meeting. Also, we have a number of people who are interested in item 6A, the workshop item regarding the city's efforts to construct a homeless shelter. So we will be giving you time to speak after the workshop presentation by staff, and we'll be able to hear your comments during that time. So at this point, we will receive the other public statements. Madam Clerk, would you please call the first public speakers, and may I see the cards too, please?
Mayor Go, we have six public speakers this evening, three regarding separate subjects and three regarding a single subject. The first public speaker is Curtis Bingham.
Oh, yes, to our honorable mayor and our board. Just like to say, my name is Curtis James Bingham, Sr., servant of our Lord and Savior, God Almighty, Jesus Christ, who truly is the only begotten Son, who holy heavenly Father, God Almighty. I just wanted to come in in a positive way. The Lord is omnipresent. He's everywhere at once, but sometimes He puts His fingers on things. And this project that we're trying to do, the Lord, the finger of the Lord is there. When you show love, care, integrity, a blessing, mercy, grace, truth, that's exactly what this whole board is showing with this project that we're trying to put together. And so it's a blessing to be involved and to see our city take their time out to remember very important things. And the Lord tells us that the poor shall always be with us. They ain't going nowhere. And then He says, "He who lends to the poor lends to the Lord, and He will repay you." Then He tells us that the destruction of the poor is their poverty. So a lot of them act the way they act because they don't have anything. So with you taking time out to put this together for them, it's a blessing thing. It's like a monument what you're going to be doing, and what's going to be put there, the money's going to be put there, it's going to be worth way more than that once you have it built. It's a beautiful thing to see you take this time, whether you build it across the street or wherever you're building it, you're getting a full reward from the Lord because He's showing you care about people. So my Lord and Savior, God Almighty, Jesus Christ, first words when He first spoke was, "He came to preach the gospel to the poor, and the poor shall inherit the kingdom of heaven as long as they believe." heaven as long as they believe." So I'd just like to say the finger of God is on this one, and this is one you want to be proud of, this is the one you want to feel great about, this will be remembered for taking the stand and doing some of this nature. It'll be there years to come, all of us may be dead, and if the Lord ain't caught us up in the rafters of the church, that place will still be there. So you guys can be very proud for what you're doing and having the hearts that you have to care about other people, you know? And I would just like to say, when you go to Las Vegas, most of the criminals hide there because of so many hotels, since they got the money, they go there, it's hard to find them. So sometime evil love to hang around poor people because you can push them around more because they can't really fight back. So I'm glad you're also associating yourself with Bakersfield Finest, putting a substation in there too, to whirled out that crime, because crime is everywhere, the world's supposed to end because of evil, and so we definitely, Bakersfield Finest, that's another place where the Lord got his finger, he said everybody in law enforcement, all his ministers, "Thank you guys very much for always including law enforcement in what you're doing, because without them, it ain't going to work." So I just wanted to say in the name of our Lord and Savior, God Almighty Jesus Christ, this is one day you can be proud of yourself because you're really helping the people in one of the greatest ways that you can do. And one great thing you said, Mayor, one thing I love, "We ain't just trying to get at money anyway, so we got to be careful on how we do it, because not everybody's serious, because you get the game players out there too," so I love you saying that. In the name of our Lord and Savior, God Almighty Jesus Christ, thank you. I heard your beautiful speech, Ms. Felder, you did excellent on TV.
Thank you, Mr. Bingham. Thank you. I know you all mean well by applauding, but at this point in the meeting, we won't have any further applause, but thank you so much, and I know you're enthusiastic about what our speaker was saying. Madam Clerk, would you call the next two speakers, and we'll have the second one just wait right here in this chair, I know we're rather crowded this evening.
Jennifer Keller and Lily Parker.
Thank you. So Ms. Parker, if you'll just come and wait next to Pastor Grace. Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Keller, I'm speaking regarding the parking issue. I've read the 161-page downtown parking study, and it raised even more concerns than those aroused by my common sense. The study started in 2017, and car counts were performed during the first weeks of January. If Part Six assertion is true, stating customers and shoppers are the highest priority users to consider, this would have been done at a different time, early January, like fair time, is slower for shoppers and diners who are partying and shopped out after the holidays. They are on the wagon and at the gym for a couple of days. The Area 1 count of available spots included taxi, bus, handicap loading, and ten-minute parking. Unless the city is encouraging illegal parking, these should be omitted. F Street Parking, which is only braved by small cars and drivers not fond of their rearview mirrors, should also be excluded. The Area 2 study concludes in Section 4.2 that the 72 percent demand rate indicates parking supply can only last a few years. This study is already obsolete as that timeframe has nearly elapsed. I am no engineer expert on planning, I'm sure Quantum Consulting from out of town knows their stuff, but they don't know our town and its people. I'm just a small business owner with 39 years' experience in the City of Bakersfield, 24 of those years spent two doors west of this area. The three deterrents I hear regularly to shopping downtown are parking, homelessness, and proximity to home. If these are only perceptions, when acted on, they become reality, they discourage downtown traffic. When developing our location-
Ms. Keller, would you move the mic down, please?
Yeah.
Thank you, sorry to interrupt you.
I think that's right, okay. When developing our location, we had to remove a garage and add six off-street parking spots. The cost of demolition and paving was great, and we continue to pay $500 a month for off-site storage. Bravo to the BPD, who has recently done a super job of parking enforcement. Nearby employees park in front of our property to save spots in front of theirs, now they roll back and forth over the chalk marks. Parking problems don't end at arbitrary lines like the study area. Padre employees have parked in front of us their entire shift. Bus travelers park during trips. The parking study offered long- and short-term solutions. They assert minimum parking requirements are an obstacle to new development. This isn't a long- or short-term solution, it's a short-sighted mistake. You might add new development, but how many existing downtown businesses are closing or moving, and why? That needs studying. Like Yertle the Turtle, we can't stack more businesses on the backs of existing ones, our shells are cracking. Parking, homelessness, theft, vandalism, Amazon tax breaks, and more negatively affect brick and mortars and make more, make it more and more difficult to compete in this internet age. I urge you to take parking on a case-by-case basis, be considerate of existing neighbors, be fair to all businesses without preferential treatment to an arbitrary grid, follow ADA laws, require new developments to pay their way. You cannot revitalize downtown by limiting parking, nor can you expect new developments to save the area if you cannot keep existing small businesses.
Ms. Keller, your time is up, can you bring your comments to a close, please?
Anyone with property in the subject area should recuse themselves from this vote, which should be no, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Lily Parker.
Please introduce yourself, and go ahead and move, make sure the mic is right in front of you, please, thank you very much.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council Members. My name is Lily Parker, I am the Executive Director of Bakersfield Senior Center. I want to thank Mr. Chris Boyle, Councilman Ward, Nina Carter, Cecilia Grego, for attending a meeting that we had in the center today to answer questions in regards to funding. Bakersfield Senior Center is one of the oldest senior centers in Bakersfield, and I am first of all opening our doors for any of the community meetings, especially in regards to the TCC funds for planning as well as for implementation. Secondly, Bakersfield Senior Center, we are looking for funds for renovation of our facility. The building is old, built in 1950, so we need help. And what I'm asking for is, since Bakersfield Senior Center is in the TCC zone, is that we be a part of the community engagement when it comes to planning. Also, on Measure N, we're asking for Bakersfield Senior Center to also be a pay, a place, a community place for meetings there. Also, last but not least, and I did speak to Mr. Boyle earlier today in regards to the general plan, Bakersfield Senior Center would like to be a part of the process, and can the city incorporate policies that protect and prioritize vulnerable populations like seniors, that's people like me, 65 and older. So with all of that being said, I look to you to assist me in this endeavor, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parker.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next two speakers, please, and the second one, come and sit right down here by Pastor Grace, please.
Mayor, the next three speakers are speaking regarding affordable housing. The first speaker this evening is Ed Adainka Glover. The second one is Wendell Wesley.
Mr. Wesley, if you would come and just come up here so we can move things along, please. Welcome.
My name is Adainka Glover, and I work at Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability. Good evening, Mayor, and City Council Members and Staff. I wanted to speak about the Affordable Housing Workshop that will take place this evening. I just wanted to highlight how this meeting came about. There was the Annual Progress Report Meeting in August, where the staff provided a presentation and also took comments from the public about how the city is progressing towards meeting housing element requirements. From that meeting, there were a lot of questions about affordable housing from the City Council Members, and so that's what brought about this workshop this evening. We met with the Development Services in August, following the Annual Progress Report Meeting, and at that time, we talked about a variety of issues that residents have raised as a priority. And in regards to the workshop, we had asked if we could make sure that there was a public comment period, so that the, the public can ask comment, ask questions and provide feedback after they hear the workshop presentation. So we first asked in August, we followed up with that request in October, and at the beginning of October and at the end of October, from what I'm hearing, there might be an opportunity for public comment for the homeless workshop, but I'm not sure if that same opportunity is being afforded for the Affordable Housing Workshop, and if not, why, why there is a distinction there, especially since that request was made some time ago. One of the reasons affordable housing is so critical is because a lot of families in Kern County, and even specifically Bakersfield, are extremely rent burdened, and what that means is that they're paying oftentimes over 30 percent of their income on rent, and so that takes up rent or, or just housing, which takes up a lot of their income. We ask that the city prioritize affordable housing, not just in keeping up with its programs and making its commitments, but also providing funding, for example, from Measure N to the Affordable Housing Sustainable Communities Program, which is a funding program through Strategic Growth Council at the state level, where applicants can pay for upwards of, can receive upwards of $30 million to bring affordable housing and other investments to their communities. So with that said, those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, and the following one after that also, so he can come to the front, please.
Wendell Wesley and Troy Hightower.
Mr. Hightower, if you'd make your way to the front. Where is he? Oh, there you are, okay, very good.
Good evening, Mayor Go, City Council Members. Affordable housing as it stands right now is not affordable. Most of the apartments that offer some type of sliding fee or affordable housing, it's all based on their gross income right now, nobody lives off their gross income, that's part of the problem, okay? It needs to be based off their actual income, which we all call a net, okay? This has been going on forever, and it's all across the US right now. So it's a major problem, not just here, but the problem just doesn't stop with affordable housing. When people are paying upwards to 40, 50 percent of their housing needs, okay, then they have very little other income to do anything else with, food, saving for emergencies for cars or whatever else that family may need. It's a lot of stress and pressure on the families, which creates stress and pressure on their children, which creates stress and pressure on marriages. It's too much stress, it's too much pressure, and because of that, we have an opiate problem now, along with alcohol and everything else. And a cer, not, and a certain percentage of these people will succumb to those addictions and issues and divorces and homelessness, is also adding to the homeless population. Everything affects everything. We need to start looking at how everything is connected, and how everything affects everything, and when we do that, we'll solve the problems of the 21st century. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wesley. Next speaker, please.
The final speaker is Troy Hightower.
Good evening, my name is Troy Hightower, I'm a local consultant here, and I work on community and economic development projects. So Mayor and Council Members and, and staff, I'm here to support 6B and the city's effort to address affordable housing. Some key points I'd like to make is, in the past, there was not a lot of money for, or resources for planning or building housing, but now we have, thanks to Measure N, we have funds, local funds available. Thanks to SB 2, we have planning funds available, and the governor has announced a 1.7 billion for housing, so I think now is a great time for us to address our housing needs. With that, I'm not sure how the workshop works with this process. I read the presentation here, that's supposed to be for 6B, and they mentioned regional housing needs assessment, and I don't know if they're going to present that and its significance, or we can comment on that later, I don't, I'm not sure of the process. But in any event, what I wanted to do was ask the, the mayor and the council and staff to consider, when we're looking at economic development, I consider affordable housing part of economic development, to consider establishing either a task force, advisory committees, that could be made of community-based organizations as well as agencies to help the city find the best ways to use this money and improve the housing and meet our needs. In closing, my understanding is Kern Cog is now starting to develop the update of the new RENA, Regional Housing Needs Assessment, and I would encourage the city to, to closely coordinate their effort with, with them. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hightower. And in response to your question, this is the time that has been allocated for those comments, I'm sure we'll be having additional conversations on affordable housing. Thank you to all of you who engaged tonight, we really appreciate it. At this point, we're going to take a very short break while our government leaders have an opportunity to exit, do their homework, so they can get to the college of their choice. Thank you so much for being here tonight and engaging with us, we look forward to you being Mayor, one of these days, yeah. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Under Workshops, Item A, we have an update on city efforts to address homeless, homelessness, emergency shelter.
And tonight we have Assistant City Manager Jackie Kitchen addressing this portion. As a reminder, when Ms. Kitchen is finished, we'll be having public comments related to this issue.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council Members, we're here tonight to continue our conversation about homelessness. We've been talking about this issue quite a bit, particularly in the last year, but the discussion really started back in 2017, when we had a presentation from the Bakersfield Homeless Center, the Mission at Kern County, and Flood regarding some emerging issues related to an insufficient number of emergency beds and other issues related to homelessness. We continued the conversation in February of last year with an update from city staff on what the city's been doing to address the issue. We talked about the allocation of federal funding for shelter operations, the job programs with the homeless center that the city is funding, and other issues that the city staff responds to through police, code enforcement, public works, recs and parks, and water. In May of last year, we then had a workshop on the annual point-in-time count from the Kern County Homeless Collaborative. They told us that in 2018, there were 885 homeless individuals in the metropolitan area, and 370 of those were unsheltered. That was a 46 percent increase from the prior year. But then last year, we started to see an even more visible change. We really started to feel homelessness and the impacts in our entire community, every quadrant of the city. There were increased calls for services, impacts to our residents, and we knew that there are less than 400 existing emergency shelter beds between our two existing homeless emergency shelters. The annual point-in-time count from this last January showed a very significant increase that you can see here, there were over 643 homeless individuals counted in the metropolitan area, and that represented 108 percent increase over the prior year. So we asked our partners at Flood Ministries, who's a homeless outreach provider, to ask homeless individuals that they came into contact with why they weren't going to a shelter. Besides the lack of available bed space, homeless individuals also referenced that some of the existing shelters didn't have enough storage capacity for their possessions, they didn't allow for them to bring their pets in, they didn't accommodate for them to be together with their partner. And 91 percent of those surveyed said that they would go into a shelter if those issues were addressed. So in September, let, just last month, we had a very comprehensive community workshop here, provided to your council, the city's been engaging with, on the issue with the community. We talked about these historical efforts that the city has been undertaking to address homelessness, and we also talked about the city's three-point approach to addressing homelessness. The first portion of that is acknowledging the crisis. Your city council passed an emergency resolution back in November of last year, acknowledging this issue and directing us to do something to address it. Part two of that is strengthening our existing service providers, the city's allocated funding to both the emergent, or the Bakersfield Homeless Center and the Mission at Kern County to add 40 additional beds for a total of 80 to those facilities. We've also continued funding that jobs program with the homeless shelter to the tune of approximately $1 million per year. approximately one million dollars per year. We partner with the homeless center to have staff working with us at the animal control facility, at the green waste facility, and with our freeway removal program. The third point, or portion of that plan, is implementing that Measure N funding. So a little bit about Measure N, as we all know, this was the result of more than forty community meetings that staff had, where staff engaged with the public and talked with them about what are your needs, how should we prioritize this funding if this measure is passed? We came up with thirteen priorities, and two of those specifically deal with homelessness. They direct us to reduce homelessness, to work with our existing service providers, and to bring more emergency beds online and construct affordable housing. So at that September workshop last month, we went into detail about what we've been doing with those Measure N funds. We talked about the support for the downtown clean teams, support for increased police and security in downtown, support for our Kern County Homeless Collaborative, the launch of the city's rapid response teams in code enforcement and recreation and parks, support of the county's community prosecution program, clarification of the use of city facilities, i.e. park equipment, and also, the big topic, the addition and construction of an emergency shelter facility. At the end, we also talked during that workshop about what the city has been doing to prepare for constructing an emergency shelter. As you know, we've never operated one before, so we've been doing very detailed research to figure out how to best implement this project. We have visited emergency shelters across the state, as well as established relationships with the existing two homeless centers in Bakersfield. These are some photos of some of the places that we've been. We've been to Fresno, San Diego, San Luis Obispo. We've walked through those facilities, talked to the service providers, and figured out what their best practices are, and learned from their mistakes. This is a facility in San Luis Obispo. It's one that I would say is probably the gold standard for an emergency shelter facility. As you can see from these photos, it's very clean, it's very well organized, it's very secure, and it's, when you drive by, you don't know what it is. You can't tell that it's an emergency homeless shelter because it is that well-run. So that is what we would seek to do here in Bakersfield. So at the end of the council meeting in September, your council gave us very specific direction on a number of items. Those are detailed in the staff report. You gave us direction related to contracts for the downtown cleaning team, private security, working with the homeless collaborative, working with the county, and most importantly for tonight, working towards construction of that emergency homeless shelter. You asked that we come back with a purchase agreement for a specific site so that we can move forward. So since that meeting, staff has continued research on this project. We've been meeting with potential operators and service providers to gain a true understanding of what we need to have within the facility, and we continued with our three-tier property search approach. We searched for all, we searched all M2-zoned property, that's industrial zoned property within the city. We hired a commercial realtor who shares with us tonight to tell us what property was actively listed and on the market and available, and we also asked the community to come to us with property that maybe wasn't on the market, but that they thought might be suitable. So just a quick note on M2. Why did we focus on M2 zoning, medium industrial zoning? That's because an emergency shelter is a by-right use within that zone. Why is it a by-right use? Back in 2007, the state of California passed the Housing Accountability Act, an updated housing element law, and what that act did was it said that every city is required to identify at least one zone within their city where these kinds of uses are allowed by right. So in 2009, the city council passed a resolution selecting the M2 zone, and the rationale behind that is that M2 zoning is typically buffered from sensitive uses, like residential or schools. It's usually not butted up right against those kind of uses, and it's also just the type of zoning where it could be compatible with other existing type of uses. So when we did our search, we used those criteria that we talked about back in September, the M2 zoning, and then we also looked for a property that had sufficient space to co-locate all of our service providers and have enough room to add future beds in the future. And then we also looked for a site that, whose design and layout landed to our ability to design with safety in mind and make sure that we had security on the site. So we also kept in mind that from our research, we learned that in order to be successful, the facility needed to be professionally operated, be located in an area that will minimize and mitigate the impacts to surrounding businesses. We want to make sure that we're not having a negative impact on our neighbors. We also learned that in order to actually encourage people to come to the facility, it must be safe, it must be clean, and it must provide those wraparound services that are not otherwise available on the streets. And then we also were looking for a site that was large enough to include all of those basic features that we talked about. There needed to be room for safe sleeping quarters, restrooms, showers, laundry facilities. We needed to accommodate for low-barrier components, and just to note what low barrier means to Bakersfield is, we allow for pets, we allow for partners, we allow for possessions. We are not taking a stance like other cities that low barrier also means drugs, weapons, and all those things. That's not what the city is pursuing. We also want to make sure that this facility is safe for both the people inside the neighborhood and the area, and then the employees that work there. So looking at the M2 property search, this is a map of the city of Bakersfield that shows where all the M2 property is located. There's over six hundred and fifty parcels that we looked at. As you can tell, M2 zoning is located in about three areas in the city. It's down in the southwest, it's up on Rosedale Highway near 99, and it's in the east Bakersfield area near Brundage Lane and Highway 58. Of those properties, a majority were not listed or on the market. Most of the southwest is built out. The property near Rosedale Highway is owned by the refinery and PG&E. They're not interested in selling. So it left us with a pretty limited group of properties to look at. However, we were able to find two that were willing to sell, and the city issued letters of intent to purchase on two of those properties. The first one is in the Old Town Kern area, a couple of blocks from the existing homeless shelter on East Truckston, and the second property is located on the Highway 58 corridor. We, because it was a real estate negotiation, we were required not to disclose those locations until we reached a tentative agreement with the property owner, which is their right, and we respected that. So as we were negotiating with both property owners, we also evaluated the properties based on their cost, the ability of those properties to meet the amenities that I just described, their location, the ability to grow within the property, and to meet all of the other needs that we've discussed over multiple meetings in the past. So we worked with them, and then just last Tuesday, Tuesday morning, in fact, we received a signed letter of intent back from one of the properties, and that was Site 1, the Calcott Site. So Tuesday morning, as soon as we got that signed letter authorizing us to go public, we did. We issued a press release. We wanted to begin engaging the community. We put it out on our social media. We've met and had conversations with several of the adjacent property owners, and we immediately scheduled this for discussion tonight at the next available council meeting. So a little bit about Calcott. Some of you might be familiar with it. It's a one-hundred-and-ten-acre site. It's shown on the map here. It's located just north of Highway 58 between MLK and Washington, and most of the property is developed with metal warehouses. These are simple metal warehouses that used to and still do store cotton for Kern County and the entire Central Valley, and I've learned we even store cotton from Texas and Arizona and other places here at this site. We're not purchasing the warehouse portion or attempting to do so. We're actually looking at this area here. Down on the southern portion of the property, there is an office complex that consists of close to thirty-five thousand square feet of office space and thirty-five thousand square feet of connected warehouse space, and that's all located on seven-and-a-half acres. Some of the benefits of Calcott is that it is entirely located within that M2-zoned area. It's not just one parcel either that's M2. All the surrounding parcels are zoned M2, so it's well buffered from sensitive uses. Between this property and the next adjacent neighborhood, there's a train track, so it's bordered by the train track, it's bordered by the highway to the south, and it's bordered by other warehouse-type uses to the east. The closest school is approximately a mile to the west, and this site is also close to regional transportation, which will be helpful in getting people to the site. So this is just kind of a close-up of the layout. As you can see, those two warehouses are up on the northern portion of the property. This is a conceptual site plan. We will be working with an architect who specializes in homeless shelter development and has done over ninety of these facilities, and he will help us walk through and space plan and make sure that we're doing it the right way. But this is a conceptual layout, and I kind of wanted to show you a few things here. We have a little video. So this is the site, looking at it from a drone. You see Highway 58 up there on the top of the site. We're looking south. Those two warehouses are at the bottom of the screen, and those can be converted to dorms in the future, and as you can see, it's surrounded by additional warehouses on all sides. So we can take a little peek inside now here. That's another view. So this image, it's a little difficult to see, is the existing dining hall. There's a cafeteria there that we'll be able to convert easily to a commercial kitchen and food service area. These are, this is a view of the inside of the warehouses that will be converted to dormitory space and a space to store possessions for people that come and stay with us. And then this is a view of an existing office area that could be an additional dorm in the future. This is where the cotton actually used to be sorted and looked at by the purchasers before purchased. And then this is the existing boardroom. Calcott had close to forty board members at one time that gathered here. We envision making this a dayroom space for people to stay during the day so that they're not out on the street. And there's also a green space located just outside of that dayroom, again, a place for people to stay, and if they're not receiving medical care, or job training, or other types of services, this lends an opportunity for them to stay on-site. The remaining balance of the site is about fifteen thousand square feet, and we envision creating a police substation there. You can see some images of the West Side Substation here. We envision building something that is equivalent to that. It's something that the community has needed for a number of years, and the Calcott Site actually affords us the opportunity to bring that substation online. And the substation would be staffed full-time with a desk officer that would be in place from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. There would be clerks, a front counter. The community would be able to come in and speak with the police staff or the assistant staff, get copies of reports, and have file complaints, and it would also bring an increased presence to the area. We envision holding three patrol shift briefings per day and actually having teams deploy from the new East Side Substation. We also envision having a community room that wouldn't be only for police to use, but for the community to use. I know that it's always difficult to find space to have meetings, and this substation would provide an opportunity for that. We would also have more police equipment in the area and possibly relocate our impact team to this location. So just a couple of things that I wanted to point out. There's some pictures here of the San Luis Obispo facility, which again is kind of our model and the gold standard. But what we're proposing to do at Calcott is a little bit different than what you see at most homeless shelters. We are not going to allow walk-ups. This would be a referral-only type of facility. We would partner with FLOOD Ministries, with Code Enforcement, BPD, KCSO, Kern Medical, the other hospitals, and have partnerships and a transportation network with them so that they could bring people to the facility, and we also would not have a daily meal service where anyone can just walk up. Why would we do this model? It's to reduce impacts to the neighborhood. We saw this approach in many of the places that we visited. A lot of facilities are kind of turning towards this model so that you don't have people gathered outside and hanging around the neighborhood. This is a more productive way to bring people in, ensure that they're immediately connected with services, and connect them with things to do during the day inside the facility. We would also have full-time security, both inside of the property and in a ten-block or so radius around the property. The purpose of that security would be to walk around the neighborhood and make sure if there's anyone that's kind of hanging around or needs services, they would make contact with them and invite them to come to the shelter, and they would transport them there. The facility would also be fully fenced and contained, and again, the goal, much like San Luis Obispo, is such that when you drive by, you won't know that this is an emergency homeless shelter. The idea is to create that safe space inside for both the residents within and around the area. We would also have a security plan in place. Our private security team would have close consultation with BPD. Obviously, with them being on-site next door at a substation, there's an opportunity for collaboration at all times. We'd have clear coordinated entry, registration, screening and weapons removal, cameras and hand lighting, all of the things that you would expect at a well-run facility. One of the other benefits of Calcott that was actually unexpected was that in addition to that seven-and-a-half-acre shelter site, this property also comes with the opportunity to purchase the ten acres next door. And what that does is it allows the city to become an owner, to become a part of this neighborhood. So we would be just as invested as the rest of the neighborhood in ensuring that this facility is run right. We wouldn't want to do anything that would impact property values. We would want to ensure safety of the shelter, not only for the benefit of the community, but for the city, too. We would be at the table as an owner in this community and a true part of the community. And ideally, at some point in the future, we would repurpose that vacant dirt, put improvements in, and possibly have an affordable housing project, partner with the Kern County Homeless Collective or other partners to create housing there. We could also move a city corp yard there, or we could repurpose it and sell it to a private party to build warehousing or some kind of other industry that would help bring more jobs and economic growth to the community. Here's a little video of that site. So now we're at Calcott here in the foreground, and we're looking to the east, and you can see that that ten acres is also pretty underutilized. It's buffered on both sides by the warehouses, so there's a lot of opportunity there to do some good things for that area. And these good things would build on some of the other things that the city's doing in the southeast. We've been investing in the community, and we plan to continue to do so. MLK Park obviously is a great community asset. The city's recently installed new electrical and lighting, new security, upgrades to the rec center and pool. Then the MLK Community Center offers summer day camps and free meal programs, the five-dollar swim lessons at the pool, and year-round activities for Halloween, Christmas, Kwanzaa, Easter, you name it, we do it there. We've also invested in the Friendship House. We're looking at the installation of a new neighborhood park, and we're also talking with the county about helping them make improvements to Beltar, Terrace Park, which is a county park, but it's surrounded by quite a few city residents. So we're coming to the table and talking with them about how we invest in that park. Some of the other things we've done is we've invested over eight million dollars in the last six years in new curb gutter and sidewalk, and this map's a little busy, but all of the color on there are the locations where the city's been investing in those infrastructure improvements, repaving the streets, et cetera. We've also, we're a partner with the Senior Center who spoke earlier, and we helped fund their operations. We've been doing those park upgrades. We've also funded new infrastructure at Cap K, at the Food Bank, and at Bark. We helped purchase a new tire shredder for them. We also have a couple of projects in progress, more than seven million dollars in the last two years, that's been put into Brundage Lane pavement and pedestrian improvements, as well as pavement improvements on Union Avenue. A couple of upcoming opportunities that we wanted to share while we had the chance. We have some economic opportunity areas specific to the southeast. This is a locally-generated program that has essentially a hundred thousand dollars available for kind of micro-investment projects, mini-grants, per se, where we would make, provide grant opportunities to small business owners to help them with things like facade improvements or redoing the frontage of their building. So that's available, and we encourage the community to reach out to us and see and learn more about those programs. There's also another program that we're working on with the EPA. There's also another program that we're working on with the EPA related to a brownfield revitalization program around the airport. So talking a little bit about the budget, in this last, in this year's budget, there's nine million dollars that's allocated to addressing homelessness. Four million of that is specifically for the construction of the emergency shelter and five million of that is for affordable housing, which would be the next step for homeless individuals after they get out of the emergency situation of homelessness. We do have a request for proposals out right now for that affordable housing component. However, given that we're already halfway through the fiscal year, we don't think that all of those funds will be used this year, but we will revisit that next year. The good thing about the Calcot facility is that it provides that opportunity to construct the emergency shelter, but it also provides us the opportunity to buy that ten acres next door, which can be a step towards the affordable housing component as well. So some of the upgrades that you see that we'll need to do, we've had some estimates done. The good thing about Calcot, a lot of the infrastructure is in place already. We do need to go in and renovate a few things and those are spelled out here. I won't get into the detail, they are in your administrative report, but in general, it's going in and bringing things up to ADA compliance, reconfiguring those warehouses to be suitable for a dormitory and doing some utility improvements that are needed in the area. So from an operating standpoint, this project, though it could potentially grow to four hundred beds or so at some point in the future, that's not day one. Day one, we're envisioning between a hundred to a hundred and fifty beds and that would probably be for the first year. And we would want to make sure that we work with our professional operator to get them up to speed. They'll need to hire staff, they'll need to train staff. We don't wanna rush into this too quickly. We wanna make sure that we have the teams in place, that they're operating, that they understand what they're doing, that they're operating in a safe way before we even think about a phase two of additional beds. So our estimated operating budget is around one point five million, but that is an estimate. We have been working closely with both Kern Behavioral Health and Kern Medical and they have both made commitments and they're here today to provide medical services at our site and partner with us. So that will be a significant budget savings and will, at the end of the day, help decrease the bottom line for operating. So that's fantastic news. So the next steps, they're outlined in your administrative report, but just in summary, it's to authorize the city manager to negotiate and return to your council with the purchase and sale agreement. And then once we have that in place, we'll begin the space planning with the architect. We'll put out a request for proposals for an operator and we'll also initiate construction of the phase-one retrofit to bring this facility online. I am joined today by several other department heads and city staff. This has really been a team lift and I just wanna take a minute to thank them all. This is not something that I did alone or that any of us have done alone. It's really been a lot of thought, a lot of care. And I do have to say, the city staff is very passionate about doing this the right way. And with that, we're here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Kitchen. At this time, we will receive public comments. Typically, we allow fifteen minutes per topic. Given the significant interest in our community on this topic, we are gonna allow all those who have turned in comment cards or a request to speak cards this evening. And so, Madam Clerk, would you announce the number of cards that we have? I think it's over thirty.
We have received thirty-two speaker cards.
So to allow us to move efficiently, Madam Clerk, if you could announce two people at a time, or two people and have the second person just in the wings over here and when that person gets up, announce the next one. So we always have somebody close by to move up. And just make sure, I know there are people of different heights, make sure that you move, adjust the microphone so that it is in front. And again, paying attention to the signal up here, green means you're good to go, yellow means start wrapping it up. And if you see red, time's up and we would ask for you to be considerate. We have a lot of people who wanna share and we wanna hear from all of you this evening. So at this point, Madam Clerk, would you please call the first two?
John Sacco and Louis Gill.
So Mr. Sacco, if you could come up here and Mr. Gill, just wait on the side, please.
Good evening and thank you. My name is John Sacco. My family has owned and operated at sixteen-twenty East Brundage Lane for over seventy years. That's right next door to the west of the proposed Calcot facility for the homeless shelter. I am not a NIMBY, I'm not a "not in my backyard" individual. The first approach, the one thing I thought of when I heard about this was safety. Safety for the trucks that roll up and down Brundage Lane to the tune of tens of thousands a month. When you drive into Sierra, the first thing you see is safely or not at all. This is a disaster waiting to happen. Make no mistake, semi-trucks loaded with recyclables, cement and other semis that roll down, wholesale fuel trucks, oil trucks, recycling oil trucks, rolling down at forty-five mile an hour, take two-hundred and fifty feet to stop. Somebody's gonna wander onto Brundage Lane and somebody's gonna get killed. Our facility is a high industrial recycling facility of scrap metals, aluminum, copper. We know that some homeless people, not all, have addiction issues. And the first place they wanna target is people who have copper and people who have aluminum. Now, Councilman Rivera has been in our facility and he saw the scars on our fence line, the scars of the numerous break-ins, the scars of people trying to get in to steal from our facility. A proposed homeless shelter would only bring more people to the area. We already have issues with homeless people in our area. We have needles on the ground and feces and such, such as a lot of other businesses. We're not alone. I just heard about the future of putting housing on an M2 area, industrial area. That scares me. Housing for families, kids gonna play on Brundage Lane? I'm sorry, that's incompatible land use. I have, raise your hand if you're from Sierra. My employees are scared. They're unnerved. A lot of them you see here are female. Sierra will have to go out and get security full-time. We don't let people on our facility. It takes an employee forty hours of safety training just to enter our facility as a worker. So we'll have to have guards at our gate, new fence line and twenty-four-hour guard service. That's gonna cost Sierra one-hundred and fifty thousand a year and a two-hundred thousand dollar infrastructure cost. I'm sorry, but I cannot support this measure only because it's a safety problem and somebody's gonna get killed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sacco. Next speaker and then Madam Clerk, would you call the next one after that too, please?
Louis Gill and Brandon Die.
Good evening, Mayor. My name is Louis Gill. For the last nineteen years, I've had the privilege of being the CEO of the Bakersfield Homeless Center. We operate at sixteen-hundred East Truxton, little over a mile from where the proposed site is. We support the work that the city has done. I've been very impressed with the intentional and deliberate work that I've seen city staff do to try and learn about how you serve the people we serve, how it can be successful, what a facility would need to be able to successfully serve, as opposed to just jumping to a response because there's pressure from the community. We support the creation of additional emergency services because they're needed. Right now, our safety net has maximized available resources. We've gone beyond capacity on a regular basis. There's no options. This proposal is a step towards getting something done. Now, anytime we respond to something like this, it creates rifts in our community and people are angry. Lo and behold, people have strong reactions to people living outside and having to watch their illness or their chemical dependency express itself in public instead of behind a wall. But there are people suffering outside and ultimately, the streets are fatal. This is what I want each of the council to hear. There is no perfect location. There is no perfect location. Location will always be controversial. There will always be a business that says this is incompatible with our use. And more surprisingly than anything, I think, there are many churches that are believing that it is incompatible with their use. I never saw that one coming. Don't blink. Make the hard choice. We gotta get this done. Fear causes people to react and then express that fear. I strongly advise you not to make a fear-based choice this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. Madam Clerk, next speaker and the following one too.
Brandon Die and Tom Touchstone.
Good evening.
Welcome, Mr. Die. Raise the microphone, please.
Brandon Die with S.A. Recycling. We're at two thousand East Brundage Lane. We run an automobile shredder there. We are, have to run our shredder at night because PG&E, you know, won't allow us to run it during the daytime. So our equipment will run, we run a twenty-four-hour shift, six days a week. Now, what John said is true, you know, we've had, these are facts, in this past, ten months, we've had over two-hundred thousand dollars worth of theft. We have full-time security, twenty-four hours a day. We have cameras. We have wrought iron fence. I'm just here to oppose this. I think it's a bad idea, it's a bad location, you know. It's kinda like Murphy's Law. If it can happen, it's gonna happen. John is correct. There'll be, there'll be someone killed and who are they gonna come after? You know, we run, we process twenty thousand ton a month through our facility. It's all done by truck and by rail. I think it's just a bad idea to put these people in jeopardy on a road that has that kind of traffic with heavy trucks and that's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Die. Next speaker, please, and the following one.
Tom Touchstone and Felipe Guerra.
Hi.
Welcome.
My name's Tom Touchstone. I'm pastor at Valley Bible Fellowship. I'm an executive pastor, actually. I've been here before, talked and know a lot of people and I wanna thank the city for all the information they gave us. We happen to be in a business that we're, I actually walked it the other day. I don't think we're quite a half-mile from the proposed facility. But this isn't a business that we're unfamiliar with. We support the local rescue mission. We've done that for thirty years. We've done teen challenge for at least thirty, thirty-five years. We have an active ministry that we engage in with the homeless. So we're there on Brundage Lane, very active in the community. It's interesting to me that, as we learned in the paper and I kinda got educated on why we was kind of an undercover operation, but I was shocked, and I'm saying that, I was shocked once I started walking the neighborhood, 'cause I did walk the neighborhood. I walked all the neighborhoods. I've walked for twenty-five years, seen the kids we've grown up with. And when I was asking people, have they heard about this? And I was shocked to find out, nobody has talked to us. We've all learned about this in the newspaper. I'm still kind of shocked that I am part of the community, we're part of the faith-based community, we're part of the solution that I thought. I'm here today also for Pastor Ron because he's holding a public forum at our church because we are part of that community. We have a voice in that community. We love that community. We wanna be a part of that community, wanna be a solution to this, but I think without conversations, we can't be that. I think without talking about how the community's gonna survive. I'm listening to the business owners at our neighbors. They're worried about how they're gonna survive. So my heart here today is, Valley Bible is not opposing your plan. It's not. What we have a problem with is the number of possibility of the beds, up to four-hundred and fifty. We think that's excessive. We've already talked to some of the faith-based community already. They agree with this, that four-hundred is excessive. We actually would like to be included. I really like the three-point plan that was possibly not available. I would like time to discuss that more. I'd like to time to be part of this discussion. We have been and I would like to continue that. So I'm here tonight saying, we're not gonna be part of the problem, we're gonna be part of the solution, but we don't think there's been enough conversation, just don't think it's been there. I don't think that we've done enough. I think all the resources are there. I think all the ideas are great. I really do. So as I'm here just to tell you that I look everybody in the face and I know a lot of you guys, I'm here to help. Pastor Ron's right behind me. I mean, he's, I'm here to tell you, he's here. We're not opposing this thing, but we think the maximum amount of beds is excessive and I think it would be an overload for the community. I think it doesn't help us be on our offense because we wanna help this. We have a whole plan that we'd be involved with that community. I think a maximum bed facility of four-hundred plus will put us on the defensive. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Pastor. And next speaker, would you call the next one after that and please wait right here in the wing so we can save time. Next speaker, please.
Felipe Guerra and Nadine Escalante.
Ms. Escalante, if you could come and wait right here on the side, please.
Hi, my name is Felipe Guerra. I am a safety professional. I work for Sierra Recycling. I have fourteen years of experience that, in the safety field. I hold numerous certifications, OHST, ASP, CSP, Smith Defensive Driving, et cetera. My work is safety. My concerns, always safety, public safety, our employee's safety. We have over a hundred employees that I wanna make sure we keep them safe. Public safety is also very important for us. We wanna make sure we keep the public and people around us safe too. And the location, once again, we're trying, we're trying to help others, but we're gonna be exposing them to hazards they're not ready for. The Brundage location has flaws. Washington Street, when it rains, it gets flooded on both sides. It's not, doesn't have any curving. The curving that's been built on the corner of Brundage Lane and Washington, it's out in the way. Commercial trucks are driving over it because they don't fit or commercial trucks have to drive into upcoming traffic so they can make a turn. There's no way people can walk on those same streets that tires are rolling over. People will not be able to walk up Washington when it's raining. That road needs to be widened. In front of our facility, there's no crosswalks. There's, there needs to be a four-stop at light. There's gonna be people crossing the street. There's motor vehicle accidents quite frequently there and somebody's gonna get run over. Our concerns are very legitimate. There's a lot of accidents there and fortunately, there's not much foot traffic right now. But when we add one-hundred, two-hundred, three-hundred, five-hundred pedestrians to that street, the risk is gonna be there. People, it's not a good area for people to be walking around in. There's other concerns too that we have, such as workplace violence. It's gonna bring a lot of other concerns. We're gonna have to redo our safety program completely. Blood from pathogens, hygiene, trash. There's just so much that we have to be looking at. The infrastructure, the design, the location, the hazards, people getting in and out. It's not just what's going on inside. For us, it's, we wanna make sure that we don't affect these people. And it makes it really difficult for us to find a way how we're gonna be able to keep them safe. It's a lot of people. It's, I don't think it's being looked at in the best of manners. And once again, really think it out. We're very concerned with all this and we don't, we wanna make sure nobody gets hurt. I mean, it's, something's gonna happen. And unless somebody does something about it, I mean, I just, I would just hate to see something like that happening. Once again, I work in safety. Safety's my, my field of work. Safety's all I do. I practice safety everywhere and it's very important that this gets looked at, not just what's going on inside, but going, going on outside and next door. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guerra. Next speaker, please.
Next two. Nadine Escalante and Gina Black.
Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. I was really surprised about the idea that you have. I think it's great. I do think that perhaps we should be tabling the issue for more discussion with the community because some of the issues that are being addressed this evening about safety with the semis, that is one idea that I never ever thought would be a major concern. And especially if we're having a homeless facility that's gonna be having children there, children cannot, they're not even as big as those tires. So I think that issue really needs to be addressed, the flooding issue. And also, we need to address the security issue. We cannot put it all on BPD's responsibility. They have enough on their plate that we cannot put everything on the responsibility of our law enforcement. I really do encourage you all to not make a decision this evening, to please have more community involvement, more community discussion and to be, allow everybody to be engaged in this discussion. Hear from everybody, connect with people in the community, go out to the community and talk to people, as well as our homeless people. Go out to the community and talk to people, as well as our homeless people. Ask them what they want. Don't make assumptions as to what you think they need. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Escalante. Next speaker, please, and the following.
Gina Black and Justin Greer.
Welcome.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members. Thank you for serving our community. I know your job is not an easy one. I'm the principal of Valley Schools, which is located at 2,300 East Brundage Lane. We serve 18 months through eighth grade. I would like to address the matter of the proposed 450-bed homeless shelter at 1,900 East Brundage. Unfortunately, statistics are high for mental illness, drug abuse, and crime within the homeless population. All pedestrian traffic from the east will walk right by the entrance of our schools. My concern is the safety of our children. How can you guarantee the safety of our kids? If our parents don't feel that their children are safe at the school because of this facility, they're going to pull them out, and then our enrollment will drop. So, there's a real concern of us having to close both of our schools due to the proximity of this homeless shelter. Our school is mission-based. We serve the community with monthly prayer and service projects, and that includes helping the homeless. So, please, I'd like you to just reconsider the size and the location of this. If you could just put yourselves in the shoes of our parents, just for a moment, would you feel okay sending your kids to a school that close to this facility? So, that really is my concern. Can you guarantee the safety of our children? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Black. Next two speakers, please.
Justin Greer and Janelle Ward.
Welcome.
Hello, everyone. I'm Justin Greer. I'm a director of children's ministry at Valley Bible Fellowship and the middle school ministry. Over 400 kids from that community weekly, I see face to face. And my concern is also the safety. But I want to state, on behalf of the church and myself, we are for this. We commend Bakersfield for actually doing something. That's not what this is about. But it's the size. We feel, and I... And me personally, this is aside from my organization, that we are taking the community's problems as the statistics that were shown were from the whole community. And we're taking all those homeless, and we're putting that burden on one community who is already suffering so much from poverty itself. And I can't help but address that it is one of the poorest communities we are trying to make this facility be the base of. And there's plenty of other places that we could look to put smaller facilities in place and put this burden on other parts of town, as well as us. Valley Bible Fellowship also has other campuses around the community, so we are not running from this. We're gonna be a part of this wherever it's at. But I believe there needs to still be a discussion with the community in where we put these shelters and how we man them, and how we make sure we're keeping our community and our kids safe. In the proposal, I couldn't help but hear where we're putting our money into Martin Luther King Park and the... And how we're putting our best foot forward in to make that place better. And my question to everyone in this room, how many people feel safe to go and have their barbecue for their family in Martin Luther King Park right now? And I don't believe that is a... I don't believe that is a fact. So, I don't believe that we have already put everything forward to make sure that we're gonna make sure this facility is safe to be around. But I can guarantee you that Valley Bible Fellowship will do our part. We... If it goes through, we're gonna partner with you guys. We're gonna be there, boots on the ground, helping. But I do believe we have to speak up for the community around there, because no one else will. And you're pouring the whole homeless problem of Bakersfield, and you're putting it on East Brundage Lane, when I think Bakersfield has a lot of wonderful people here who can help carry this burden in the northwest, southwest, and downtown area if we take our time and look and find smaller facilities to carry that burden. I believe as a church, we've seen this. We've went from mega church to multiple campuses where people get the proper attention and proper help and proper counseling, because it's a smaller unit of people. And I believe we should take our time in making this decision. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Guerra. Next speaker... Next two speakers, please.
Janelle Ward and Isaiah Crompton.
Hello. Thank you, guys, for hearing me out, council members and mayor. My name is Janelle Ward, and I'm a citizen of the neighborhood for the proposed site. And I'm here standing with my church as well. I go to Valley Bible. I do agree that the site, there is a homeless problem. We do need addressing. And I applaud you guys for putting your attention towards that. I don't think all the research was presented tonight on the site. On the site and how big the site is and what it causes for the neighborhood that's nearby. I grew up in the eastern side of Bakersfield. I grew up around Martin Luther King Park and the projects there. So, like he said, even today, I'm a father, too, and I would not go to that park and have a barbecue. It needs upkeeping. But the research says if placing a homeless shelter this close to this neighborhood, the increase of crime does go up, not in just violent crime, but most likely in public disorder as in like... I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous.
It's okay.
But a public exposure, indecency, and just because the mental illness in a small population of the homeless does have a substance abuse problem. It does cause impetite theft and grand theft goes up around there. Study shows that... Also, too, you guys said there would be families there. So, the influx into the schools that are already over capacity, to like a 32 to 35 ratio, one-to-one student/teacher ratio, that goes up, it shows 20% when you do this. So, we're putting kids that already have a bad issue, a bad problem, already into a stronger... And a bigger problem that might... They might slip on education-wise. I think we could update our amenities for the... For facilities like this, not just directly building them on M2 zones, but in rural undeveloped areas. There's plenty of real estate around Bakersfield where this could be accommodated by. I think mental illness, substance abuse, and maybe getting in contact with our local unions for training, for jobs, for jobs, and accessibility for membership into them so they can find financial stability. I think we keep an open dialogue with the community on this. We can really change not just Bakersfield, but the lies in Bakersfield. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Next speakers, please.
Isaiah Crompton and Pastor Jordan.
To the Honorable Mayor, City Council staff. I'm here in opposition of the homeless shelter. I'm here as a long-term resident of the southeast community and a... Just as a citizen, to say that this is not a good idea.
Mr. Crompton, would you move the mic closer, please?
For an already blighted community, basically, that's on life support already, that we're trying to, through some of the pastors in our community and some of the citizens and some of the business owners, we're trying to breathe some life back into it through having community meetings and being aggressive in trying to bring in stores, pharmacies, different things that our community lack that other communities have. And we... I think that having the homeless shelter would place those things further away from us. And that's not the goal for our community. I know it's a need. I do a food distribution where I feed over 200 people a week through the Kern County Food Bank, and most of them are homeless. I work with homeless people in my sober living homes. There's a need. It's definitely a need. But I'm just saying, not there. Not in the southeast community at this time. So, I'm asking you guys to rethink it, reconsider it, and let's work together to figure out a plan that's better for the communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crompton. Next speaker, and then we'll take a break after Pastor Jordan.
My name's Pastor Jordan. Thank the Honorable Mayor and the City Council for having us. I'm in opposition of the project for a couple of reasons. Number one, I think it should have been handled better through the City Council before it went public. I think the city could have came to the community at first and say, this is a proposal. What do you think? If you look at the Cottonwood area, it's always been that area that the city just come out and give them what they want them to have. They've been begging for curbs and gutters for over 30 years. Curbs and gutters, sidewalks. They pay $9 for a box of cereal because there's no grocery store out there. Okay? They had a meeting a month ago. Prominent figures were there, and they proposed grocery stores, lights on the street, sidewalks, a pharmacy. They got this whole community in an uproar about what we're gonna do. And what do we do? The news people tell us that we're gonna give you a homeless shelter. What happened to the streetlights? What happened to the curbs and gutters? Seven Oaks, Hagan Oaks, where I live at, on Ming and Ash, we got sidewalks. There's over 100 people here that's against that for two reasons. You're making a homeless center that look better than some of their houses.
I understand that you're passionate about this. We talked about the ground rules, and there is no applause allowed during this time. So, thank you. You've been great and very attentive. Thank you for doing that, and thank you for continuing to cooperate and just make sure that we add the time back to Pastor.
And I'm gonna be nice. I'm gonna give you those minutes you took from me. Okay?
I'll give them back to you, Pastor.
Not a problem, ma'am. I'm with the city. I pastor a church. I don't live on this side of town, but my parishioners does. My parishioners live over here, and they come to me as their leader. There's over seven pastors here that's in that community. And I heard you talk about all the meetings you had with staff and all of those. It would have been so very simple to have one meeting at Martin Luther King Park for the community. That didn't happen. That didn't happen. Now, there's over 100 people out here, and I guarantee you, you can't get 20 of them to say that they want this in their neighborhood. I know we need it. I agree, we need it. But how many of you, if the land was free and the contractor was gonna build it for free, IKEA was gonna furnish it for free, how many of you would still want it in your neighborhood? Because it would take your taxes up? I mean, your taxes down? Your property rate goes down? You lose. There's no winning in this. There is no good neighborhood. Nobody wants it. But why put it in the poorest part of town to make that town, that community even poorer? Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. And now, we've been going for a while, so let's take a 10-minute break. Let's come back at 7:15, and we will see you then. Thank you. Thank you for gathering back. Just make sure that everybody has a seat. And, Madam Clerk, the next two speakers, please, and then one wait here on the side.
Matthew Cruz and John Slack.
Mr. Slack, if we can have you wait here just on the side, please.
Honorable Mayor and council members, my name is Matthew Cruz. I tell people that, just like Tom. Because when I was in the Army, everybody thought my name was CRUZ. And it was tough back in the '50s being in the service, just like it's tough being poor today. I want to just tell you what I do. I represent a collaborative that has four sober living or transitional homes, we prefer to call it, here in the city of Bakersfield. To understand what we're trying to do, we're trying to cure the disease and not treat the symptom. When I was a little boy, growing up in East St. Louis, Illinois, with no sidewalks and no gutters, and the potholes were screaming at me that you're different and you're not as good as those children that we just saw sitting here tonight. What we have done is we are negotiating with the county of Kern to lease for 10 years the old weights and measures building at 1116 East California Avenue. It is designed to be an incubator for startup businesses, as we have already done with four of the people who are in our transitional environment by making them partners in our business, those who have worked and have worked the plan. We want to be an incubator for 500 profit or income-producing entities at what we call the Bakersfield Island. Because when you're drowning in poverty and you're out in the middle of that ocean and you cannot see land, no matter which direction you look, you give up. What we're trying to do is not find a bed to put your head, but a home to put your family. We're trying to do one thing that is missing in every desperate situation, and that is hope. We live in America. I fought in two wars, and I retired from the Army 45 years ago, and I'm still fighting for justice.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz, for your service to our country. Next speaker, please. Next two, please.
John Slack and Gary Massey.
Is Mr. Slack not here? He didn't come forward earlier. Right, so, this is Mr. Massey. And then, would you call the next one, so we can have that person standing here, please?
Pastor Freddie Thomas.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, Mayor. Hi, Council. I just wanna... Just want to say, I've owned an automotive shop for 24 years, the last 13 being on East Brundage, 4201, to be exact. And, you know, as a business owner, we're doing our part. We support the Bakersfield Rescue Mission monthly. My worship at Valley Bible Fellowship, as well as three of my kids actually go to the private school there. And, you know, over the last two... Probably the last two years, you know, we've seen the homelessness come up. But I've also seen the crime with the homelessness. I mean, my shop alone, in the last six months, I've replaced 27 stolen batteries. I've replaced numerous side windows. You know, I've had to fix my cut-up fence where they've come in and stole stuff. And yeah, I've got cameras. Yeah, I've got lights. You can watch them do it. Can you ever tell who it is, any of that? You can't, you know? And I just believe that putting a facility in like this at that large of a volume, because I'm not against homelessness, okay? Been on mission trips, you know? My heart is for the homeless. But on a scale that grand, in one area, secluded to one area, it's not fair, you know? I've lived on the east side since the mid-'90s, you know? We... We're not the wealthiest side of town. We get that. But to throw it all on our lap is not fair. So, before we make a rash decision tonight, there should be more community involvement. It shouldn't just be 10% of the people that don't even live in this area get to make a decision for the rest of us that do live in this area. It's not fair. You guys gotta come up with something better, and you need to put some more time and effort and thought into this. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Massey. Next speaker, please, and the one following two.
Pastor Freddie Thomas and Hector Rizzo.
Welcome, Pastor.
Honorable Mayor and City Council members, my name is Pastor Freddie Thomas. I am the associate pastor and youth pastor of Jerusalem Mission Community Church of God in Christ on Cottonwood Road, soon to be South Martin Luther King Boulevard. The one thing... The one community that cannot withstand the pressure of taking on the homeless of the entire city is southeast Bakersfield, specifically Martin Luther King Boulevard. I know we mean well, and it is a good idea that we want to help the homeless with shelters and with beds. But if you feed a man a fish, you feed him for a day. But teach him, you feed him for a lifetime. Beds only feed for a day. They come in night in, night out. They come in night in, night out, but it does not solve their problems. And it does not help the community, especially a community like that on South Martin Luther King Boulevard, which is soon to be from Cottonwood Road. It does not help that community there. They're already dealing with so much pressure financially, and this would pretty much almost be the straw on the camel's back. What's more pressing is not just another shelter with beds, but a building that helps the homeless, it would rendering them tools to get back into mainstream society. Buildings which would help those who are mentally ill and giving them the aid they need to be able to take care and treat them. What they need is not just a bed, but what they need is specific help from the city that has a more permanent solution. The community on South Martin Luther King Boulevard, our community is trying to get on our feet. We're coming together and trying to build each other up. We have four schools coming in on Cottonwood Road alone to help build our community and help, you know, strengthen our children. But do you know that it's not just nature and nurture, the environment also impacts the child as well? Our children on South Martin Luther King Boulevard and Cottonwood Road, they're already living in homes and with a family where finance is strained, and they see that. They already have a limited vision of what their future could be like. And if they have to go into a community day in, day out, where they see homelessness day in and day out, where they see that that is a bleak future, it will impact their minds. It will impact their vision and their dreams in which they wish to go. So, I ask that this community, I ask that the council members here and our honorable mayor, please think wisely, and please think about our children when looking at this objective. So, I also oppose this movement. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Thomas. Next two speakers, please.
Hector Rizzo and Stephen Pels.
Hi, my name is Hector Rizzo. I've been on staff at Valley Bible for twenty-seven years. I've been a member of that church since the mid-'80s, and I grew up right behind the church on Virginia Avenue and Sterling in the projects. And we grew up, we were poor. It's funny, we didn't know we were. Lower middle-class family. And what endeared me to Valley Bible was the passion and the love for the poor from our senior pastor. And we currently have a food pantry at the church. It's ongoing. It's open to the community for our parishioners. We do Thanksgiving baskets. We do Christmas parties. We do backpack giveaways. We just have a real love for the poor there at that church. So, obviously, we're not against the poor. We love the poor and the homeless, and we're not against you building a homeless shelter there. It's just the size. The size is a little bit challenging. We also believe in a message that endorses people wanting to change, having a desire to change. We help people that wanna change. It's like, once God is in a person's life, change will happen. The desire for change will take place. We don't believe in endorsing or enabling people or giving in to their vices, to their addictions. We don't believe in that. We believe in helping people. We work with the Rescue Mission. We bring guys from the Rescue Mission. We transport them to our church. Jason's Retreat, we welcome the ladies from Capistrano. We do believe that in changing lives. And I'm not against, the thing is, there's a lot of the people that I encounter on the streets that are panhandling, a lot of times they decline the help that we try and give them. And it's food, and sometimes it's food, prayer, stuff like that. Or they decline going into the Rescue Mission or the homeless shelter because they don't want rules. They wanna maintain their autonomy. You know, they want that freedom, and we all have to live by rules. I do. I have to submit. And so, I'm just encouraging you to relook at the philosophy. It's okay to have some rules. It's okay, you know? It helps bring order to our world, and it's just the size of the shelter that's in question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rizzo. Next two speakers, please.
Stephen Pels and Steve Teder.
Honorable Mayor and council members, Stephen Pels, Executive Director of the House and Authority of the County of Kern. I first want to thank the city manager and city staff, the council members, and the mayor for your leadership in recognizing the crisis we face as a community and taking decisive action to address the need. I support staff's recommendation on this item and ask that you authorize the city manager to move forward with the acquisition of the site and conversion of the property. Adding additional emergency shelter beds with comprehensive onsite services is an important first step towards helping residents get off the streets and ultimately into a permanent housing solution. City staff have done their homework and identified a location that is ideal for a proposed shelter. Over one-third of the six hundred and forty-three unsheltered homeless persons counted in Bakersfield last January were counted in the southeast area of Bakersfield. This location is not close to residential neighborhoods or to other sensitive uses. The city took great pains to try to find a location that was not next in a residential neighborhood. In fact, the alternative site that was listed in the prior presentation actually was across the street from residential homes. This is not near residential homes. The city's plan for transportation to and from the shelter facility and the co-location with Bakersfield Police Department substation will help ensure the shelter will be a good neighbor to the surrounding industrial and commercial businesses. In fact, I would suggest if the city finds that this location is not appropriate for a shelter, you're not gonna find a location in Bakersfield. Inaction is not an option, nor is setting an arbitrary limit on the number of persons the new shelter can serve. We know that there are well over six hundred and forty-three of our fellow residents who are suffering on the streets today. We can't pretend that things will somehow get better without significant new temporary and permanent housing resources. When you're living in a cardboard box in an alley, you're not gonna get a job, you're not gonna recover from your physical or mental illness, and you're not gonna become clean and sober. You're just trying to survive. Having a safe place to sleep and access to services will help persons experiencing homelessness address their needs and ultimately access housing. We know that affordable housing with services works. Over ninety percent of homeless persons placed in permanent supportive housing successfully remain in housing. It also saves taxpayer money. A local cost-benefit analysis found net annual savings of $28,000 per person due to improved health and progress in their mental health and substance abuse issues. The problem we have is there's not enough permanent housing solutions for those that need them, so we need additional shelter beds while they wait. Your action today to approve staff's recommendation is an important first step in meeting that need while also addressing the community's concern with the secondary impacts of homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pels. Next two speakers, please.
Steve Teder and Jim Wheeler.
Welcome.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Steve Teder. Thank you for being proactive in addressing the homeless issues in Bakersfield. I personally support the rehabilitation of homeless prayerfully and financially. I'm a pastor at Valley Bible as well, and I'm a parent of three children, two of which attend Valley Schools on East Brundage. Our concern is the homeless shelter is just too big. Four hundred and fifty beds, that's a lot of people. I think, and many fill, that this should be much smaller, under two hundred beds. With those large numbers, as a parent, I'm concerned about the safety and the welfare of the schools, the preschools, the neighborhoods, businesses, and we just, we know that, we don't know which percentage of the homeless may pose harmful impacts upon the neighborhood. It is concerning that certain shelter residents who may disregard the law and other safety will roam the area and not just stay in that facility. Several residents have shared with me personally that they are already burdened with crime, drugs, alcohol, and people roaming the streets to the parks, to the neighborhoods in the area, and they said, "They're building a homeless shelter. Why would they do that to us?" And so, people are concerned about this in the neighborhoods, right behind the facility. I respectfully ask that the city would reduce and cap the number of beds to under two hundred for the safety and welfare of this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Next two speakers, please.
Jim Wheeler and Bill Walker.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Jim Wheeler, Flood Bakersfield Ministries. Statement was made earlier. What are we gonna do? What are we gonna tell our children who see homelessness in their area? Well, we already see homelessness every single day on the streets. Our teams are out every single day engaging clients on the streets. If you choose to delay the location of this shelter, those people are still going to be visibly on the streets. We cannot put this off any longer. We need the shelter. As has already been mentioned before, there's no perfect location. We need action. I'm here to encourage you this evening to trust the staff's plan. There's been a lot of fear expressed here tonight, and it really disappoints me. People are afraid of what they don't know and they don't understand. But we cannot be driven by fear and ignorance. We need to listen. The presentation tonight addressed most of the fears that have been expressed tonight, and I don't understand it, about safety. The plan is a good plan for the shelter. It will minimize the impact on the community. We need the shelter. Many of you know that I worked for the County of Orange for several years as a homeless service manager. We actually, while I was there, created four different emergency shelters. One of the shelters is the same model as the model that's being proposed by city staff. There were the same issues. There was a large church near that location. People were afraid, and people were concerned. We met with them and talked to them, and once the shelter was built, people were pleased because there was no impact. You could drive by the shelter, and you would never know it's a shelter. It's the same plan as the one that the city staff is recommending. I encourage you to lead and to make the hard decisions for what's best for our community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Next speaker, please.
Bill Walker and Sheila Shegos.
Good morning, Bill Walker, the Director of Kern Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, Mayor Go, council members, staff, and the public. I gotta tell you, I normally go to the Board of Supervisors meetings, and this has been the nicest articulate group giving messages, and I just wanna thank you for the way you've come up and made the messages you've given. I wanna speak on three things today. I wanna speak to safety, continuum of care, and I wanna speak to support. A first couple of clarifications. The first one is, I know you're not looking to build an emergency shelter that's a walk-up shelter. You're looking to build a service where people are transported to and from, and that's very important to understand. Also, it's not a bed. It's a place for services and then leakage to more services. So, let's talk about safety. I'll give you some numbers. Twelve thousand, thirty-two thousand, one thousand, nine hundred and fifty, thirty-four, two, two, and one. Twelve thousand, how many people are in treatment with us every single day? Thirty-two thousand, how many people we treat in this county every year? One thousand, the number of people we are housing right now. Nine hundred and fifty, the number of people who come through our psychiatric evaluation center at Mary Kay Shell right across from East High. All three of my children graduated from East High. I was gonna say something to the blade who was over here earlier, but he's gone already. And we don't have incidents. Nine hundred and fifty people, over half of which are brought in involuntarily by law enforcement because we transport to and from. We have a model of safety. If you go to our psychiatric hospitals, we have four, they are all close to residents, and they are all safe. And these are the most intensive services we provide, and I do understand that we need to look at the criminal element as well. There is an element of, crime is crime. There's a time people need to be arrested. There is time where they need to be adjudicated and come through dug courts, and if you don't have a little bit of a stick, you'll never get to the carrot. I taught for twenty-five years in the Subsidiary Program at Cal State, the KDAC program. Over half of the students have lived experience, and the other half had family experience, and a third of them generally had gone through arrest records before they actually came to their own sobriety. So, I want to marriage these things and say, a low-barrier shelter is part of the missing continuum of care. It is a vital link. It links to the services we provide, to those thousand beds, to the Housing Authority beds, and those individuals out there right now that we can't get to, this may be the only way to get to them. I wanna, and just by giving my support and my appreciation for the city planners and the work that you've done, while also honoring the comments that others have come before you. I have two brothers that are pastors, so it always makes me wanna sit up and listen whenever a pastor starts to speak. And so, I wanna appreciate everyone in this room and tell you that our department gives support to this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Next two speakers, please.
Sheila Shegos and Kalen Peterson.
Good evening, Mayor Go and council members. My name is Sheila Shegos, and I represent Community Action Partnership of Kern. We serve the entire community with many programs that help serve hard-to-count, hard-to-serve populations. I also have a fun fact to share with you, as demonstrated by the youth today, is that twenty years ago, I sat in a room, as you are today, making the hard decisions about opening a low-barrier shelter in the heart of Flint, Michigan, one of the highest crime-ridden, low-poverty communities in our nation. That low-barrier shelter transformed our community that once was, as a young person, very vibrant with General Motors and all of the manufacturing industry. And as time went on, only about ninety-five thousand people were left in that community, and most of them were in a state where they could never leave because they were homeless. They were low-income. They had no hope. They had no faith. We opened that low-barrier shelter not knowing what would happen, what would become, what we were facing. What we found is that a community that was struggling, challenged, highly challenged, came together. All of the fears were expressed like they are today. They were talked about, they were worked out, and that community surrounded that shelter, which opened up as a thirty-thousand-square-foot facility, housing hundreds of people on a daily basis, feeding hundreds of people on a daily basis. Crime rates lowered. The community got involved. There were schools near. There were businesses near. The businesses thanked us for helping to move the homeless population into that facility to get help. The homeless individuals, many of them were returning offenders, were trained, certified, and offered jobs with partners. I have been in rooms with men who cried because, for the first time in twenty years, they got to go to work. I have been in rooms with families who have been homeless for years and have had no hope until something like this was created for them. I stand before you in full support of this project, knowing that it can and it will work if we decide that it will, and together. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speakers, please.
Kalen Peterson and Olivia Tarazas.
Good evening, Mayor Go and members of the council. Kalen Peterson, representing the Greater Bakersfield Chamber. Earlier today, we provided a follow-up letter regarding our organization's stance on the city's plan to address homelessness. I've provided copies for you today. Today, we'd like to offer our support for the city's proposal to purchase the Calcott property on East Brundage with the proposal to establish a low-barrier shelter. As you know, this issue is of great concern to the general public and our membership. In a recent poll of our top employers, homelessness was cited as the highest priority for local government to take action on. However, no one facility, no one program, and no one organization can fix- However, no one facility, no one program, and no one organization can fix this issue alone. It's going to take sustained effort, collaboration, and investment. And unfortunately, there is also no perfect location for a facility of this type. And although we support the location before you today, there will always be safety concerns for the neighborhood. So we will expect, and our members will demand, that this facility operates as a good neighbor. We're encouraged by the intake and operation plans, and most importantly, by the proposal to establish a police substation on the property. Beyond general interest in this matter, we also have a fiscal interest in the matters of the city, and most importantly, measure in funds. As a key supporter, a ballot signatory, and a champion of the campaign, we have a clear point of view about how these funds be spent. One of the priorities laid out in the ballot language was homelessness, and we've been supportive of the city's appropriations in this area and would encourage continued dialogue. Finally, we'd like to echo our initial letter that we sent last week encouraging continued collaboration between our local governments and support for certain programs, including the community prosecution program. We'd like to commend the city, their staff, and the council for taking a diligent and thoughtful approach to finding the best possible solution. Today, we not only urge your approval, but we also encourage sustained efforts toward continued dialogue with stakeholders and neighbors affected by this location, and to developing solutions that will address all of their concerns. Thank you.
Thank you Ms. Peterson. Next two speakers, please.
Olivia Tarazas and Justin Dos.
Welcome.
Good evening Mayor and staff. My name is Olivia Tarazas, and I am a resident that's right there at the corner of Oswell and Brendage, and we've lived there for over 30 years. Now, my concern is a little bit different. We've been dealing with a lot of low-income housing that has been built there. We got, you know, Section 8 apartments that have gone up there. Well, me and my husband invested in our property over 30 years ago. You know, there were great properties, large properties, you know, we've all added and improved our properties, but this is only going to, our hard work is just going to go to waste. And it's just like, to resell for us would be devastating. We have the homeless shelter right there on Truxton with the low-income housing that they already have there on Oswell. We've seen a high rate of crime in our neighborhood. My neighbors are always talking about getting broken into. I personally am a recent widow of marriage of 46 years, and my protector is gone. And so I actually had to confront one of my homeless people from my trashcan and my recycles, and, you know, they're not all approachable. You can tell them to leave, but you don't know if they have a knife. I have a disabled daughter, and it's just me now and her. And just to note the fact that they're going to have this many homeless people down the street from us, it scares me. And also too, it's just that the whole neighborhood is just like, we have enough low-income in that area. Why can't they bring us a Costco, a Winco, or something that's going to upgrade the neighborhood? They always bring us all shelters or low-income things, and for us property owners that have invested many years of our lives, and we take pride in ownership of our homes, it's like no one took in consideration about our investments. So I'm just opposing it, and I'm praying that you guys consider some of the long-term residents that live in that neighborhood and have taken pride in their ownership of their homes. Thank you.
Thank you Ms. Tarazas. Next two speakers, please.
Justin Dos and Wendell Wesley.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I want to thank all the council members, the mayor, and the team that put this together. Obviously, a lot of work went into that. The presentation was amazing. I've worked my entire career in healthcare management, and I've done a lot of large projects. There's nothing worse than doing a large project and then having someone come and step on it. And so that's not what I'm here for tonight, but I do have concerns regarding the size of this shelter. 450 beds in an area that is one of the lowest socioeconomic of Bakersfield and one of the highest crime areas. As a parent, during the presentation, they said that the closest school was .9 miles to the west. It's actually less than a half a mile to the east is Valley Elementary and Valley Preschool. And I have a student that goes there. I'm concerned for the safety of my kid. Statistically, Vancouver, British Columbia, they open a homeless shelter every winter, and they see a 54% increase in crime while the shelter is open. Seattle recently did the same thing, and they placed a low-barrier shelter that was large without the proper resources in place. They saw 104% increase in crime. As we all know, many of these people in this, in our homeless population, they suffer from mental illness. And the American Psychological Association, they recently did a study that homeless people bouncing around in large shelters are more likely than homeless people living out on the street to commit violent crimes such as robbery and assault. This was directly linked back to the stress from living in close quarters with other stressed individuals. So I'm not opposed to the shelter, I'm opposed to the size of it. The best practice, you can see out of different countries that have done this and that have had great success with this, is to put housing in place for these people and the resources in place for these people. Not just a shelter where you're going to cram them into one area and increase stress with people that are already mentally ill, people that already have drug addiction. It's just more adding more stress to their life when they're packed into a small area. So they are more likely to commit crimes with a shelter that is this size. I'm 100% in favor of building different shelters, but throughout the community, we need four or five shelters that are smaller in size, that have the proper resources. The current plan calls for one social worker for every 20 individuals in the shelter. If you've ever been around anyone that has a mental health breakdown, it can take six to eight medical professionals to get these people back into place in order to take care of them. There's no way we have that we're putting the resources in place to keep the staff safe, the businesses safe, and our kids safe that go to school close by. Thank you for your time. God bless.
Thank you. Next two speakers, please.
Wendell Wesley and Johnny Aldana.
Mayor Go, city council members, I'll try to keep this really short. That location is already impacted, that neighborhood, by gang and a large amount of crime. It's very heavily gang-impacted. And being homeless before, I know that there's a large segment of that population that will commit crime and do unspeakable things, and we're putting that in a neighborhood that people have worked hard, you know, most of their lives to have nice homes in that neighborhood, and they're seeing their property values go down, as well as, you know, having to deal with the day-to-day of maybe people littering and doing other things to their neighborhoods. And there's not enough jobs, there's not enough good public transportation for people in those neighborhoods as well. So maybe the police substation would help, but it just seems like it's going to be an awful lot of work to keep people safe, and it's going to be a lot of money spent to keep people safe as well and be respectful to those businesses. So what I would suggest, if for whatever reason we decide to keep that location, that main street, there's going to have to be a fence, not like a cheap fence, but a wrought iron fence in the middle, not an island, but as an island so people can't cross all the way across. So that would eliminate the jaywalking, put some nice trees in there, and, you know, so that's all I got to say on that. There's been a lot of good comments today, either both for or against, and I just pray that the right choice gets made. Thank you.
Thank you Mr. Wesley. Next two speakers, please.
Johnny Aldana and Tim Grayes.
Good evening Mayor, council member staff. I heard just a few minutes ago, continued dialogue. Continued dialogue, or lack thereof. Like Pastor Tom said earlier, shocked, community didn't know what was going on, what was being placed there. I was born and raised in that neighborhood, in that community, East Bakersfield, alumni of East Bakersfield High School, have family that lived there. That community, East Bakersfield, they've been burdened for over 30 years with the homeless shelter on Edison for a very long time. And if anybody's driven through there, between California and Edison on Washington, it's, it doesn't look right. You have people living there, whether it's drugs living there, it's just not a pretty sight, and it's trickling into the neighborhood. So now you're saying, let's put a facility on Brendage. And there's, and it's not close to a neighborhood. I'm sorry, if you, if you're on the corner of Brendage and Washington and you just drive down a minute, you're going to run right smack into a neighborhood. And if anybody was lucky enough to eat at Lockalonia Restaurant, it's now closed, that's the neighborhood we're talking about. Mount Vernon Schools right down the street, Valley Bible, the Christian Schools right down the street from Brendage, and then not too far down Brendage going west, you have Fremont Elementary, Betsy Owens, there's a lot of schools in that neighborhood. So I just don't understand the large capacity of beds, 450. 150 maybe? I think I'm in support with the pastors at Valley Bible, where they're saying maybe a 150-bed max, maybe some housing that's like the housing that's by Mill Creek. Looks very nice there. I would be in support of that, but something very large in that magnitude, I just think would be overwhelming. I know we talked of a substation. That's great, good police presence, but from somebody that's worked law enforcement, there's too many calls for service when these gentlemen come on duty. Officers have too many calls for service. Security, that's great. They're going to go and they're going to see people wandering the streets, but what are they going to do? Push them into the neighborhood? They're not going to arrest them? They're going to take some members or some people back to the, to the shelter? That's great, but most people are just going to linger to the neighborhood. So I was actually going to leave a little while ago, but I heard a person say, "Don't blink. While I'm going to ask you to blink, take a step back, pause, think about it, and not vote on anything tonight, but maybe something smaller in magnitude is what I would hope that you guys would consider." Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next two speakers, please.
Tim Grayes and Charles Everly.
Charles Everly is going to be speaking instead.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, councilman. I recently had a discussion with Councilman Rivera, and we talked about a vision that he talked about, and he was, he told me that they were going to speak of an annexation of the county to the city, a new housing unit, repair some roads, talk about renaming Bell Terrace Park to Coretta Cot Scheme, talk about demolition of old structures and creating jobs. And I would say, wow, that's awesome, because I grew up in that neighborhood, and I'm excited about that, right? And then all of a sudden, I hear that they're going to put a homeless shelter. So what does that do? What does that do to the people that live in the neighborhood, who weren't even consulted about what you're getting ready to do, right? So let me, let's just talk about the neighborhood itself, right? What's going to happen to the people's property that they own with the value of what they own, right? Now, it's going to be less, right? Crime's going to go up, right? Okay? Now, you know, one of the deals is that earlier, I was on the board of directors of the Friendship House, and one day you need to go down there and drive through that area so you can see what we're talking about, because it's not a vacant lot, it's actually an active community. And you see those little kids, and one of the things that they were promised, they're going to build them a new park, right? And they're going to build them a new school, right? But what do we do on top of that? We want to put, whether it be 150 or 450 homeless people running through, the most undesirable people in Bakersfield, right? So what they decide to do? Put it in their neighborhood. Put it in their neighborhood. There's a thousand places they could have put it. So why burden those poor people with another burden? I don't get it. That's the only place we could find? So what I'm asking you to do is think about, think about those people that are struggling in that neighborhood, and please, don't make their life even worse than it is. Thank you.
Thank you Mr. Everly. Pastor Grayes, would you like to speak now?
Because I'd like to echo that sentiment. I have a church that's in that area and that location just as well. I grew up on Lakeview. It was called Lakeview at the time, before it was called Martin Luther King Boulevard. Went to Betsy, Betsy Owens School. And all of these areas in which, that I grew up, it hasn't changed very much. Neither has any stores have been created that are there. The neighborhood still looks the same as it has been since 40 years ago, and it still looks the same. It's a poverty area. And then since we're going to try to help, I believe that's helping, putting a home in the neighborhood in that part of the neighborhood would be great if we could help the people that are there first. The people who own the homes, the people who are going to school in that neighborhood, the people who are living in the facility. And I believe that the change will only come when you help the community first. It's not by bringing other people in to help them, but help the people that are already there. So I echo the sentiments of the speaker who just spoke and of Joe Josephat Jordan.
Thank you Pastor. Next two speakers, please.
Patrick Jackson and Humberto Quiros.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Patrick Jackson. Thank you Mayor Go and the council members here. I stand before you, just to speak about how, what I've been hearing from all of these speakers here and their concerns about the homeless center is basically the lack of respect. Respect to the community. And the presentation, which I thought was great, what the facility could do, what it could bring, and the concerns of, what was said was that they spoke with business people, community people, and those very people that have businesses right next door, people that live up the street, said that they were never spoken to, never a conversation, never dialogue. But in the presentation, it stated that they were consulted, that they were informed, that there was some type of discussion with them. And I find it very interesting that you wouldn't have this type of issue in other communities of trying to build something of this magnitude, or any type of project. If you tried to do it in the southwest in Rosedale, you would generally have some type of meeting, input, dialogue, that when it comes to city council, education, whatever, usually have some type of interaction with the community. And what it seems is that what we're hearing here is, over 30 years, 40 years, the same thing has been happening to one particular community. And as we look at how this issue is coming to the forefront, the ask is to table it. Table this decision. I don't think that is something that will be hard to do, is as you're hearing some of these things, I think that you may have not heard before, maybe, I believe in your quest to do something about the homelessness, which I applaud you for because it is an issue, that tabling it and having the discussion move forward on other opportunities that could be available, and a lot of the concern that we heard here tonight, I believe you should take that into consideration. And taking the moment to table it, I don't think that the city of Bakersfield is against helping the homeless. And let me say that again, I don't want the narrative to be that the community is against the homeless, but I think it was the due process that people feel disrespected in coming into an area without even having a discussion and wanting to be a part of it and being able to help. So I would ask that the city council will table the discussion and for further discussion to include the rest of the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you Mr. Jackson. Next speaker, please. Next two.
Humberto Quiros and Audrey Chavez.
Is Mr. Quiros here? Seeing that he is not, Ms. Chavez. Is Mr. Quiros here? Seeing that he is not, Ms. Chavez.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Go and honorable city council members. My name is Audrey Chavez, and my pronouns are she, her, and hers. And I am a downtown, small business owner, a community member, a woman of faith, and someone who works daily with just people in our, in our community. I have been hearing and knowing the issues of homelessness for a long time. And I certainly, certainly don't feel that any specific area of town, or, or individual, or, or, or anything can, can fix this. It's not an easy fixable problem. But I do want to express my thanks and my support for the people who have been working on this issue for some time. I want to express my support for the Homeless Collaborative, for the, for the Flood Ministries, for Stewart Inc., for SOEM Cap K. I mean, I look around here and I see all of these pastors' faces that I, I met when I was marching with Faith in Action, or perhaps maybe a number of different activities, and I'm happy to see everyone. But I'm not happy about what our response as a people are to a people in need, because I think we, we've all been in a position where we've been in need. This homeless crisis, nobody wants them. I'm part of different groups, whether it's faith-based, and I've seen Pastor Vietti's request for people to come and pack, pack it up tonight, and I've seen downtown community watchers posts about people who are suffering and hurting, and taking pictures of them and making fun of them. I have seen business owners respond, like, these aren't our people. And that bothers me. That bothers me deeply. And I've seen a lot of people who don't come to those meetings, who don't care about the needs assessments, and areas that don't even implement a plan, and that bothers me. So I want to express my thanks and my support for those individuals who daily do this, whether they're paid, whether they're nonprofits, whether they're just people with kind hearts, who don't even have to have a faith behind them to motivate them to make that difference. Day in and day out, that happens. You have worked to strategically research, gather data, conduct needs assessments, look at other working models of shelters and housing. You're talking about wraparound, all these things that we've seen, amazing. Do it, get it done, because tonight, I'm gonna sleep in a bed, most of you will. I don't know if there's anyone here who's gonna sleep out on the streets, but on November 22nd, I invite you, take that place on the sidewalk. Let's see how many of us, how we feel. Let's move.
Thank you, Ms. Chavez. It is 8:06. Are there any other speakers, Madam Clerk? That's the end of our public comments on this. Let's take a 10-minute break, and then we will return for comments. Or, do we need a break, staff? Oh, we don't. Well, let's, let's see. Does anybody need a break? We do not need a break? Okay, then let's go ahead and move ahead. If you're out in the audience and you do, go ahead. We're staying up here, so let's, let's proceed. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank every single person who spoke tonight and who provided their, their comments. I've taken copious notes and have heard each and every one of you, and as well, I'm sure my colleagues have as well. This is not an easy decision, but we are in a crisis situation. And we've been working on this issue, as Ms. Kitchen pointed out, for well over two years, to address the crisis that has been growing in our local community. And we know it's not unique to Bakersfield or Kern County. I know that no matter where we place an emergency shelter, there will, there will be those who are opposed. The reason why I know is because in Ward II, the area I represent, there are over 373 emergency shelter beds that exist currently. We're adding another 80 emergency shelter beds in those existing facilities, and the county is building a facility in downtown Bakersfield with another 150 beds. So I don't want to give the impression that we're somehow asking this particular area of town to shoulder the burden for the entire community. In my ward, we're, we will have 600 beds by the time this is all said and done. I'd like to ask Ms. Kitchen a few questions, if I may, because I want to clarify a few things from comments I heard tonight, and concerns I heard over the last couple of weeks. One of the questions is regarding how we got to this location. How did we pick this location? You, you spoke earlier about the M2 zone. Can you walk us through what exactly that means? Let me, let me, let me ask you a hypothetical situation. Let's say a nonprofit organization had its own resources and its own capital, and wanted to build an emergency shelter. Would they be able to do so at the Calcott facility without the city's approval or consent?
Councilmember Gonzalez, through the mayor, yes, they would. As we talked about earlier, and as we've been talking about for the last year, two years, the M2 zone allows it by right. State law requires that the city and all cities identify at least one zone district where an emergency shelter can be built by right. That law's been on the books for 12 years.
And I know our real estate broker is here as well. If he can come down and, and talk to us about what the process was through which we've, you know, identified properties, how many property owners we've, we've, we've had conversations with, and, and if you can just kind of illustrate the process that we've undertook over the last several weeks.
Sure. Mayor Go, city council members, my name's Dwayne Keithley. I'm with the commercial real estate firm of Cushman and Wakefield. As Ms. Kitchen's already pointed out tonight, we were given specific direction as to what property types to go look for. I guess the, the good news is, in 40 million square feet of industrial space in Bakersfield, we have a vacancy rate of less than 3%. And of that 3%, very little of that is M2. So we needed to be in an M2 zone, we needed to have a property of a certain size, we needed to have a facility. We identified three properties, one which ended up not being for sale, and two other properties, you know, of which, you know, you know both of them. Unfortunately, those are the only two properties that fit the need.
Great.
Quite, that's, that's simple.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
You bet.
The other question I had is regarding safety and security, and it's been pointed out, the, some statistics have been illustrated in terms of the, the amount of crime that exists around homeless facilities, but I think it's important to note that not every homeless shelter is the same, has the same design, or programming, or structure. Can you talk to us, Ms. Kitchen, about the facilities that you've visited and researched that look like what we're trying to build, that model we're trying to follow, and, and how the crime rate has changed as a result of those facilities being, being there?
Yeah, absolutely. So one that comes to mind is the San Diego facility. That's a 325-bed facility that's located in their downtown area, less than two blocks from an elementary school. When the city went into that location, they met with a little bit of opposition. It's natural. The school had concerns, the neighborhood had concerns. And after they got up and running, they began a 10-block private security kind of task force. People that were there in the community, private security. This wouldn't be an additional burden on the police department. Someone mentioned a concern about that. We have that concern too, so it would be hired as additional security for the area. And what that team did is they walked foot patrol, they enforced the no camping policies. If they encountered someone that was in the area that was homeless, they talked to them, and they made that connection, and they said, hey, we have a facility here, let us take you to that facility. And that school has since expressed that their neighborhood has been improved. With that active presence, they've seen a reduction in crime and other issues that were already there.
Great. Thank you. The other comment I heard was a question about the, the shelter itself, and whether or not, there was a suggestion, actually, that it would be a place where people would simply lay their heads on a bed, and, and there was an analogy about giving a man a fish versus teaching a man a fish. But I think it's important also to point out the, the services that the city is looking to implement within this facility in order to move people out of the shelter. Can you talk to us about this? And I appreciate Mr. Walker, the Director of Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, being here tonight, and perhaps you'd want to illustrate a few points as well. But can you just talk to us about the services that the, the city hopes to provide?
Absolutely. So every facility is different. Some are just the bed, some provide services, some provide a full wraparound system. We're looking at the full wraparound system. We want to create a place that kind of has phases and facilitates phases. A lot of people that are on the street are in a crisis mode, whether it's due to addiction, mental health issues, or just the trauma of becoming homeless. There's a wide range of issues there. So first step is to get people to the facility, kind of get them through that transitional period. And then the second step is to make sure all of the resources are right there on site. It wouldn't be one social worker per 20 people, I heard that mentioned. That 20, one per 20 is case managers. So there's a lot of different services that someone will encounter once they come to the facility. They'd immediately have access to counselors and mental health services, to medical care, to address any wounds or other things that might be preventing them from being more productive. Then they would also have that case manager that helps them navigate all those different things. There would be housing managers that help people figure out, how do I pay a bill? What do I do with this housing voucher? Where do I get a housing voucher? How do I be a good tenant? And all of these services, that's why they call it wraparound. It's intended to get those people back on their feet, into, into a situation where they're ready to then go into permanent housing, job training. The idea is not to stay at the facility forever, but to stay long enough to get out of that homeless situation.
Yeah, I appreciate you saying that, because the length of stay is one of, has been one of my ongoing concerns, and it's my hope that we can create some sort of mechanism through which we can monitor an individual's progress in order to allow them to stay in that facility. Mr. Walker, I wanted to ask you to chime in as well, regarding your experience in, in examining these type of facilities, and, and how your resources might help complement the emergency shelter, and then also help move people out of the shelter into permanent housing.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. To the chair. On, on one side, our full array of services will be available to these individuals, meaning that our substance abuse services, our mental health services, our inpatient services, our crisis services, our mobile services. And we will also be standing up two sobering centers, one on Kentucky Street and one in Delano, where if someone does, is under the influence, they can be taken to those facilities instead, and then when they're sober, it can be brought back or brought to the low-barrier shelter. Our model is that we are going to use peer staff at the location to engage. We're gonna have therapists and professional staff available to provide some services, but we're gonna be linking them immediately and transporting to services outside of the location, so they don't think they're gonna live there forever. And then as they become available to sober living environments or others, we want to help them move through the continuum from that location to other places.
Appreciate it. Thank you. I guess I'll, I'm interested in hearing from my colleagues, but I'll leave it at this. We want to be successful. We want to be able to reduce the population, the number of people who are experiencing homelessness on our streets every night. We want to be good neighbors, and we, we, we have to be successful. We have to be. And we must start with Phase 1, with 150 beds. And I'd like to make a few referrals tonight. Again, I'd like to hear from my colleagues, but I will just note now, I'd like us to develop a good neighbor policy that clearly states how we will be good neighbors with all the folks who spoke tonight. I'd like us to reach out to the community again, and to continue the conversation about mitigation efforts. How can we make this project the best for all the community? I know, not to step on your toes, Councilman Rivera, but I know you had similar thoughts. And I'd like us to, I'd like staff to come back with regular updates on the facility, once we get it up and running, and report back to us, how has crime changed in the area? What are we doing to respond? What is that length of stay? How successful are we moving people out of the emergency shelter and into permanent housing? But we need to track this data and, and monitor our progress on a regular basis. And I'd like the council to be on the forefront of monitoring that. So with that, I'll, I'll wait to hear from the rest of my colleagues.
Thank you. Councilmember Freeman.
Come here. Well, homeless is probably the most difficult issue that the city or the city councils had to deal with in decades, almost maybe ever. This is a really difficult issue that, it's just the situations that's occurred. My thoughts are, first, I want to thank staff for a, a really thorough job, great presentation, but a lot of work has gone in, and they, they have really fought this through, covered all the bases. And as far as the facility itself, I mean, this is, this is about as good a particular site and facility itself as we could have ever dreamed of. This is far better than anything I thought we would find as far as the facility itself. And I want to find a way that we can move forward with this. But I also, I also want to thank everyone for speaking tonight. I, I mean, I learned a lot. I heard a lot about concerns about safety, about the impact economics on the neighborhood, infrastructure. It's almost like this hearing has had a benefit of maybe casting a spotlight on an area of our community that we need to spend a little more time addressing, concerns, separate from the homeless shelter issue. There's a little bit of a spotlight tonight that I appreciate, that you all came out and told us about your community and your needs, and we should, we should try to pay more attention to this. The comments were courteous, heartfelt, and, I mean, almost a little inspiring, some of you speakers tonight. I really do appreciate that. And I think we have to listen. I really would like, I think we have time to have a little more outreach, you know? I wish we'd maybe done it better, but that's, here's where we are today. I wish we had another couple of weeks, maybe two council meetings, where we can keep the process moving, but that, you have to make a final, final, final decision. Because I think we, we need to engage the community, address their concerns, they may have great ideas that we can use, but I just think that's the right thing to do. And I don't see why we can't do that, and still preserve this project. But my feeling is, I like to see us take the time to outreach with the community, meet with people, try to mitigate these concerns. We do have a big, you know, the, the size seems to be one of the biggest concerns, and honestly, we don't know. We have to learn as we go, and I think, kind of universally, no one wants to do more than about 150 beds. So we learn how to do this, and be sure that it can be contained and controlled. But this is a great facility, and I, and I think a great opportunity if it's done right. So I really believe in the project, but I like to say, take a little pause in outreach. with the community so we make this more of a joint effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so a few things. I am, uh, certainly very grateful for, I think, all the time, uh, staff has put into where we are today. The, the low barrier shelter has, uh, I think by no means been the only thing, uh, our staff has worked on, uh, related to homelessness. And I, I appreciate the amount of time, energy, heart and soul you've put into this. I think Jackie, if you don't stay on as an Assistant City Manager, then you have a job as a, uh, homeless expert, uh, somewhere else by the time this is all said and done. Um, I think to the, you know, I, I have to be honest about, you know, folks like Louis Gill who's sitting in the audience, who I absolutely think the world of and I think is doing a tremendous job in this community. Uh, I've worked with Flood Ministries in the past, um, and understand how vital and important you are, uh, in this community. And so I, there are smart people I respect, uh, who are, you know, urging, uh, us to take action tonight. Uh, but I'm not, I'm, I'm not weighing whether or not it's appropriate to pursue a low barrier shelter. Um, if, 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 if folks haven't been paying attention, we've been, uh, pretty hell bent on moving in that direction now for quite some time. This council's had numerous conversations about it. We've talked about it from a budget perspective. It needs to happen. Uh, what I, what I need to talk about tonight is, and what's before us tonight isn't, isn't the issue of a low barrier shelter itself, but rather where we're looking to place it. And I have, uh, I have a few points I want to raise, uh, and concerns I want, uh, to get out there because I think the council needs to consider them as we move forward. And they revolve around four things. One's actually the cost of this particular facility. Uh, I also want to talk a little bit about the size and scope of this facility. We've heard a lot of folks talk about, uh, whether or not a 450-bed facility is even appropriate. I want to talk about that because I think that's a good question to ask. I want to talk about the process and how we got to where we are now. Because we've heard folks talk about that. And then perhaps even more importantly, there are legitimate community, community concerns that I think we need to talk about as well. So I'm going to start with the cost. We're looking at $3.8 million for seven and a half acres and an additional $1.1 million for an additional 10 acres. And what we estimate to be $1.9 million in construction costs. That's $6.8 billion before we've even opened a door. Um, that makes me pause. I have to pause. My job is to spend your money well, and I have to take pause when we're talking about spending $7 million on one facility. Before measure end, we would have never had this conversation. This city council would have been up in arms at the notion that we were going to spend $7 million on a shelter. So this is certainly an evolution. We've gone through quite an evolution. And I appreciate the fact that measure end has made that possible, but it should still cause us to pause and consider whether or not there's a cheaper, better, more efficient way to do this. I'd argue there is. So keep in mind, we're talking about $6.8 million, $6.8 million for the purchase of the property and getting it up and running. And then we're estimating operational costs at $1.5 million, uh, to start. And I'm, I'm, I'm unclear, but I think what I heard is that that $1.5 million and it was in, um, Ms. Kitchen's presentation, I think is based on 150 beds. Is, you can just yell out yes, is that correct? Okay. $1.5 million for the 150 beds. You'll also notice though, in that presentation, it broke out then what the exponential increases were, uh, if you decided to expand the facility. And if you noticed, uh, it doesn't just tick up 20, 30, 40, $50,000. It ticks up to the tune of millions of dollars if you decide to expand and build an even larger facility. That should cause us to pause. We're talking about 10, at this point, we're talking about tens of millions of dollars. If not spent in the first year, then certainly spent in the five years after we open the doors. That should cause us to evaluate what we're doing and how we're going to measure success and how we're going to control those costs and how I'm going to be, I don't know, how I'm going to feel confident that what I'm not doing is funding a shelter that will house people until the end of time and saddle Southeast Bakersfield with a shelter that will never close. Because if we buy into this notion that there's a continuum of care and that you're moving people in, helping them and moving them out, then technically speaking, the shelter doesn't need to be there. So then let's talk about size and scope because I think that's an important thing to talk about. If size and scope is important, and I argue it is, and 150 beds is the way to start because that's manageable or that's affordable or that's what the need is, then do we really need a $6.8 million facility like Calcot? All it does in my mind is, is open the opportunity for expansion. And if there's one thing unfortunately government is good at, it's growing things. And, um, I see, I, I see a problem here. I see us heading down a pathway of unmanageable spending and, uh, of an unmanageable program. Uh, so that causes me to pause. You know, we, and I appreciate the fact that we're now having a conversation about a police substation or potentially relocating a city yard or, uh, talking about affordable housing there, which I would agree with one of the speakers I think spoke earlier is actually an incompatible use in my mind with what's happening on Brundage. Um, and I think kind of an offensive notion when you consider what's around them and what you'd be expecting people to live in as a home. Um, but if I'm going to talk about a police substation, I'd appreciate it talking about it earlier. I've never heard it suggested. Um, I'm glad it's being brought up now, but it certainly shouldn't be tied to a low barrier shelter. And if I believe that there isn't a safety concern, then really it has nothing to do with a low barrier shelter anyway. So let's build the damn thing. Um, in fact, I'd take action tonight to move forward with the substation before I took action to move forward with a low barrier shelter. Um, and I, you know, I'd appreciate doing that. Um, so let's talk a little bit about the process because I, I think that's an item that has a lot of folks frustrated. And I'll be honest, it has me frustrated. And if you can't, if you can't sense that from me now, then you'll sense it from me by the time I'm done speaking because I manage, I imagine I'm only going to get angrier. But, um, the process has been flawed so far. And I think we must do a better job moving forward. Um, you know, when, when I first heard the rumblings that we were considering this, um, I know I had a conversation with Jackie and I know I gave her an earful, uh, about concerns I had at the time, but it did not become a reality until that press release went out last week. I'm a council member. I'm one of seven people charged with managing and helping run this city. And it was still a surprise for me to get that announcement last week. Because what that announcement meant, what that, what that announcement said was, this week, we were being asked to move forward with a letter of intent and a purchase agreement for a property before I ever even had a chance to voice my concerns in a forum like this. So the process has been flawed. And what I'd argue the process should include is an evaluation of all properties. We're talking about one here tonight. We're talking about Calcot. Because we have gotten to the point now where we have convinced ourselves that that's the only place that works. We never had a conversation with all of you, with you, with anybody else about what worked somewhere else. I want to have that conversation. That needs to happen. That evaluation should include what the cost is, how are we going to manage those costs? What is this city actually willing to spend on this issue? How are we going to manage that spending moving forward? We haven't had that conversation in this forum, in this setting, and if we did, then I was asleep because I missed it. I want to have that conversation before I move forward with any other facility, whether it's Calcot or not. We should have that conversation. It hasn't happened yet. I think the other thing, uh, we have to remind ourselves of, and you know, it's, I understand that homelessness is, seems to be on every single person's mind, um, and it frustrates a lot of people. And I think it has absorbed a lot of this council's time and it's absorbed a lot of our, uh, city staff's time. But it's not the only thing we've done, uh, to attempt to tackle this issue. You heard from, uh, Ms. Kitchen earlier that we've taken several steps now over the course of the last year and a half to tackle homelessness. And one of the concerns I have when we talk about process is how we're actually talking about all these things together. We have a lot of fragmented conversations to the tune of millions of dollars in some cases that I don't think are actually jiving and working well together. Um, so this, the, the discussion of a low barrier shelter should be weighed against the $2.2 million we've already allocated to expand bed capacity at the rescue mission and the homeless shelter. But I don't feel like we're actually considering that. That seems to me should have some weight on, on what kind of facility we build in a low barrier shelter. Councilmember Gonzalez, uh, mentioned that by the time we're done and before we even take action on something like Calcot outside of his ward, we'll have over 600 beds online. At least I think that's what I heard. I think that's huge. Um, I don't know what, uh, what that's going to yield. I don't know how that process is going to unfold. So is it really appropriate then to spend $6.8 million on a massive complex adding more beds with the potential for more beds before we've even had an opportunity to let the millions of dollars we've already spent on the issue take hold? I'd argue there are cheaper, more efficient, better ways of, of addressing this. I also kind of find it a little ironic that we're talking about this low barrier shelter and we're talking about homelessness and turning things around for people. Because this very same body, uh, had a discussion and an opportunity, uh, to employ homeless individuals as a part of a program, uh, that we currently now fund. And we're not funding a program that employs homeless people. I've asked that that be brought back. I'm hoping it's going to be brought back. I think when I reminded our, our city manager of it last, uh, I'm, I'm not sure it sank in, but it's a program we should be investing in. And it seems to me that if we're so concerned about helping people, that we should then be prioritizing programs like that. So I want to make sure we're also talking about those things. Those should be part of this conversation. A low barrier shelter can't be talked about on its own. So then I think it's important to talk about community concerns. And I, and I know I got all hot and bothered about all the other things I've talked about, but this is probably the most frustrating one. Because, and it's taken me a few days to get, uh, I think as frustrated as I am, but I'm frustrated as hell at the notion that we would introduce a shelter in an area that's been challenged and saddled with so many issues now for so much time. And I take even greater offense because I'm actually working with folks here to try and change that. And we tie, someone mentioned an annexation earlier. We're actually looking to annex the community just south of this. If you're looking at that map and you're telling me that there aren't neighborhoods around it, you're blind. There are neighborhoods all around it and they're going to be impacted. So we should talk about that. I'm not under the impression that there is a perfect place. I understand there isn't and I understand there will always be, uh, hesitation and constraint, uh, or at least we should exercise some constraint, but there's going to be hesitation from wherever we go. So I understand that, um, and there's no perfect scenario. But it's, it is actually a little frustrating, um, for me to have to sit here, um, and accept the fact that in a community where we don't have a grocery store like's been mentioned, where we're talking about trying to get a pharmacy or access to food, uh, we're throwing a police substation as a part of a low barrier shelter to, I guess, make us, uh, happy with, with what's happening to us. And I'm, and I'm not. It, it frustrates the hell out of me. Um, so, you know, I heard, I heard folks ask that we not make a decision based on fear. Um, and I am not making a decision based on fear. My, I think what I've expressed here has absolutely nothing to do with fear. But as a council member, as a keeper of tax dollars, as someone who's charged with doing the logical thing, with doing the right thing, I do think, uh, more time is needed, um, before we pull the trigger on any, on anything related to a low barrier shelter. So I want us to make a smart choice. I want us to make an informed choice. I want us to make, uh, a choice based on the totality of everything that's going on, which is a lot. The County of Kern is doing a lot. The City of Bakersfield is doing a lot. Those folks who don't, uh, work in government space are doing a lot. And I think everyone should be at that table. I'll be honest, I don't think everyone's on the same page with, in that respect. Um, and I, and I think we should be, uh, before we decide to commit ourselves, uh, to something as big as Calcot. So I'd like to make two motions if, um, my colleagues would indulge me. Uh, the first is with respect to the actual item before us this evening. And that, uh, the motion, my motion would be, uh, that staff not take any additional steps forward in the negotiation or preparation of the purchase and sale agreement of the Calcot property, which includes not moving forward with any of the next steps that are also outlined in that administrative report. That's my first motion. Um, and then my second motion, uh, should that motion pass, is, uh, that I'd like the city manager's office to work with, uh, the city clerk, the city council and the mayor, uh, to set up a meeting to talk about this, uh, and allow the community an opportunity to come in and talk about it with us. Um, and I want that conversation, uh, to be about more than just Calcot. I want that conversation to be an evaluation of at least the one other property we had, which, uh, it is my understanding was substantially less than, uh, Calcosts, Calcot, uh, with respect to cost. But an evaluation of what, what its capacity is, an evaluation of how much it would cost to turn it around, how much it would cost to purchase it, how much it would cost to maintain it. That evaluation would allow us to make an informed decision and understand the full picture. Um, and I think we should also now, uh, at the beginning, be having the conversation about who's going to operate it. So I don't want to commit to a facility, um, purchase a facility, uh, and then have no choice but to pay millions of dollars to maintain it because we decided to buy the biggest, shiniest, best thing we could. Um, I think, uh, we should be having those conversations all at the same time. And I'd like for that to happen, uh, as soon as possible. So I'd like to ask staff that we get that meeting, a special meeting, uh, that allows us to evaluate, uh, more than one property, uh, discuss what we're doing as a whole and how all of this works together. And I'd like for that to happen before the end of this month. Those would be my two motions.
Thank you, Councilmember Rivera. Are there any other requests to speak? Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank staff for their hard work and presentation. You put a lot of effort into it and you deserve credit for that. But there's a couple of areas in my ward, uh, worked on a couple of annexations, uh, completed one, we're working on another right now. And through staff, we had a fantastic plan. We did, uh, we walked the neighborhoods, myself, another elected city staff, uh, we had brochures with questions and answers to it. Uh, we did follow-up community meetings. We had, uh, we really had a good plan. I feel that we, we dropped the ball in this area for our outreach. Uh, whether this facility is a fit or not, we have a responsibility to this community to have everybody on board, at least with a conversation. Now, let's talk about the police substation for a second. So I was a cop for a long time and I know a little bit about this stuff. And I know that usually police substations are determined by a host of things, including a detailed site assessment survey of where that police station- a detailed site assessment survey of where that police station or substation is going to go. Ward seven, just speaking from my ward, I am the furthest ward from any substation, downtown station. Not saying that I want something in my ward, but I think a proper assessment needs to be done of where a substation needs to be built and not to place it somewhere on the auspices of it is a security force for homeless shelter. I think that's potentially part of a bait-and-switch program. Maybe not, I don't know, but I want a detailed survey of if that's a proper place to put a substation. So I am in line with my colleague, Mr. Freeman, Mr. Rivera. So far, I think we should pause, not saying this site won't be a fit. I don't know, but I think we need to have a broader conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Freeman.
Well, I'll assume my other colleagues don't have comments. I wanted to hear everybody's comments before we wrapped up. I think a lot of us have expressed, some of us decided that we definitely need...
Councilmember Freeman, did you want to hear the other comments?
I do, before I speak.
Yes, Councilmember, we are having problems buzzing in, I think. So if you would like him to go first?
I'd like to hear everybody's comments before I speak.
Councilmember Weir.
Okay, well, I'll have you know buzzing in is the least of my problems, so. I just wanted to make a few comments here. We sat up here and we listened, we listened for a long time. I thought your comments were thoughtful and incisive, and they really did add a great deal to this meeting and to this project and moving forward. I think all of you individually made clear your position, either for or against, and I really appreciate that. And I appreciate staff. I mean, they've been given a charge, and they've been marching and doing an excellent Might be that maybe we got off course a little bit, but I think staff's done an outstanding job really bringing something to the table, and maybe it needs to be tweaked just a little My big concern right now is that tomorrow, people are going to say, or hear, that, well, council's not doing anything about homeless if this doesn't pass. Council's not doing anything about homeless. And that really bothers me. Because homeless has become a generic word. And it's anybody that's out walking around the street, well, they're homeless. Well, I don't think that's necessarily true. There are people that are homeless out in the streets because the hand that life dealt them, and they need a hand. They need some help, and they need to get back on their path. That's just one homeless. And if, I am fairly certain that our shelter, when it comes to fruition, is going to be able to help those people. But our shelter is not designed for drug addicts. It's not designed for people that have little to no respect for the law. It's designed for the people that really need help and can get help. The others, drug addicts and people with no respect for the law, staff put together a proposal to deal with that, and we don't need a shelter to deal with that. What we need is a willing partner, and that has not happened yet. So almost all the complaints I hear about the homeless has to do with people breaking into their yards, has to do with theft, it has to do with drugs, it has to do with people that have no respect for the law. We could be doing that right now. But like I said, we need a willing partner. We don't need a shelter to handle that. So tomorrow, I hope that everybody understands, you know, this is a journey we're going through. And we take it step by step, and we learn, we move forward, and eventually, I am positive that we are going to have at least one shelter. But it will be for those that we can help. It will not be for those that avoid or choose to not obey the law. And I want people to understand that's the direction we're heading. So if you hear that we didn't do anything about homeless, that's not true. We are doing things about homeless. And we could do things for the people out there that are not homeless if we could find a willing partner. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Weir. Councilmember Freeman, I know you had buzzed in, but Councilmember Smith has a request to speak. Would you allow him to go first? Please.
Thank you, yeah. I just wanted to also state I appreciate everything staff has done, and I think they moved in the direction that we gave them. And I do appreciate community input. And there will be no perfect place. And perhaps there will not be, you know, this solution. Maybe we will continue to deal with them on the streets. We will build shelters, or, you know, people will be on the streets. But we will continue to work on it, as Mr. Weir said. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Freeman.
Well, not being one for rash decisions and not wanting to throw the baby out with the bathwater here, I would like to make a motion, it's similar to my colleague, but I'd still like to make it, that we defer action on this item, just defer it, for about a month. When would our council meeting be? Not the next one's two weeks, but after that.
December the 11th, Councilmember Freeman.
And the next one after that?
The next one after that is actually your special meeting on December the 16th, where you consider the applications for your next city manager.
But that's...
That's a special meeting. The next one would be in January.
January what?
Honorable members, Councilmember Freeman, on your agenda later this evening is the calendar for next year, which includes a proposed date of January 8th.
Okay. I think a lot of these are heavy issues. There have been a lot of requests for clarification, for additional information, for working things out for many council members. So I would propose that we defer action on this item until January 8th. That's my motion. That's all.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. In terms of how we proceed here with the motion?
Mayor, you would take Councilmember Freeman's motion first.
Okay. We have more requests to speak now. Councilmember, Vice Mayor Parlier.
Thank you. I just want to make aware that January 8th is the celebration for our city manager, Alan Tandy. It's a night of celebration for him. We have several things going on that night, and this is obviously a very weighted topic. So I don't know if we should look at a special meeting or something if we can't fit it into a regular meeting cycle. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. So, heck, you can delay it until December of next year if you want to, Councilmember Freeman. I actually won't take issue with that. But I think part of my reasoning here in pausing this evening was to ensure we were doing a proper evaluation of more than just, say, for example, Calcott. And I don't believe that has occurred. And I think this council should be presented with the facts related to at least one other property we know staff considered at one point. So I guess my request would be that you maybe consider an amendment to your motion that in January, we also request that staff do that evaluation and come to us with an evaluation of more than just Calcott, and what that means, what that costs, what that might provide for the community, et cetera, in addition to how we might address concerns depending on where, based on where those locations are.
I think the amendment is to compare, contrast, evaluate both sites we've been looking at with the economics associated with both of them. Without spelling out more, I think staff knows what we're trying to say here. Plus, I don't think it'd make it part of my motion. I want to see outreach take place during this period. It's critical. So do I need to add that to my motion also?
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, it really just depends on what you're, you know, where you want to go with this. If I understand Councilmember Freeman's motion, or, excuse me, Councilmember Rivera's motion, he wants to put everything on hold with regard to the Calcott properties, set a special meeting, and come back and have this discussion. If Calcott, my guess is, is that if there's two properties out of the properties that are presented in the special meeting, Calcott could still be one of those properties, and the council at that point could move forward.
Okay, that's not what I'd know. I want something very specific. One, delay till January 8th. Two, during that timeframe, an evaluation of the cost-benefit, operating expenses, reasoning for sites one and two, and which is more preferable. I'm just going to assume they're still available, okay? Don't get anywhere. I'm just going to assume, okay? If they're not, they're not. And I would like to have staff reach out to the community to meet with folks and hear their concerns on safety, infrastructure, and some of the other things we've heard tonight, so there's a dialogue that takes place. That's my motion.
Mayor, if I may real quick, and Ms. Kitchen may want to step up as well. In regards to the other site that was proposed, part of the process that Councilmember Rivera spoke to was the notice that was made by city staff after the LOI was signed or offered with Calcott. And Ms. Kitchen, again, feel free to pop up here to talk specifics, but the other site that was under consideration, that those discussions were done so and under a confidential understanding with that other party. And I believe the intent or the desire at this point, up until that point, was to have those discussions remain confidential, and I'm not even sure that that property remains available.
That's accurate, Mayor, honorable counsel. The other property owner, we have not reached an agreement. That property owner has not agreed to sell. Calcott has. The letter of intent is basically outlining terms of a sale and a price. There's a negotiation, just like when you buy a home. You're not committed to anything until you have an offer that's accepted. So that's the point that we're at with Calcott. The other property, we were not able to get to that point. There was a disagreement on pricing, and we just hadn't reached a point of agreement on what those terms would be. So in terms of generalities, we could talk about sites and the characteristics, but we don't have a commitment from the other property owner, yes or no?
I don't want to just spin our wheels on a property that isn't available. So I would limit the direction to evaluating this site for, you know, the projected true operating costs at various levels of bed. Guess we know the acquisition price. So I think that's what we analyze. We analyze this site with greater thoroughness, and we conduct outreach to the community to try to address all of the issues that were brought forth tonight and how they might be mitigated, if they can be mitigated. So I think I'll just limit the motion to that.
And I think we can do that, Councilmember Freeman. Part of the reason that we had to give an estimate on what operating costs would be is because up until last Tuesday, we didn't know where we would be operating from and what the specific details would be. But if we're focusing on one site, we can put out an RFP, a call for proposals for operators, and get those true costs. Also, just one thing I wanted to clarify, the $1.5 million was based on a formula and an average of what other facilities' operating costs are. In our case, we have a partnership opportunity with Kern Medical and Kern Behavioral. That would be a significant cost savings in terms of operating. My understanding is, is that they'll provide those services at no cost to the city through some of their existing programs. So if we go into those details and then look at an RFP for an operator, we can come back with a more refined budget estimate.
That's what I would like to see.
Any further comments from you, Councilmember Freeman? Councilmember Smith?
I guess we're assuming that the Calcott site stays available if we want to wait a year, as Mr. Rivera stated. Could I ask Mr. Keithley? We may be making a decision where, you know, business as usual, homeless roaming the streets is where we end up. I think we've looked at all available sites, and this is the site.
Mayor, go. Councilmember Smith, both properties we evaluated are available today, and that's, I mean, that's all I can say. They may not be available a month from now, and a month from now, something else might be available. So, you know, that's where we are today.
Okay.
Yeah, and so we've specifically looked at properties that are zoned M2, and we've specifically looked at properties where we have enough land and enough building to do what the city has directed us to do. If we decide to change those parameters, we'll go back out, we'll look for other properties.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, Councilmember Smith asked my question. Let me just ask staff, does the January 8th date work? It does not. What date would staff prefer? We would push it further back in January.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Gonzalez, it would probably be staff's preference to either one, look at the meeting on the 22nd, given Councilmember Parley's comment and the recognition of Mr. Tandy on the 8th. Another option would be to direct staff to look at identifying a special meeting in January, which then would give some flexibility in terms of date that everyone's available. So I think we have two or more options there.
I'm still modifying my motion here then with additional information.
Well, I just, I want to concur with you, Councilmember Freeman, that it's important to reach out to the community and to continue that dialogue.
I agree, and I think there's a lot of work to be done. There's a lot of analysis to be done. Then it sounds like it might be better to move this to January 22nd. That's what I'm hearing, that... I'm not really sure, but I would be satisfied January, but if we're, that that interferes with city manager lists, make it the 22nd. I don't think we'll lose the Calcott property, but sometimes when you need to do this outreach and answer these questions, we're just going to have to take that risk. So my feeling is, we continue to focus on this property. I think it has a lot of merit, this particular property, but I think we have a lot of issues to work out, budgetary issues, outreach to the community, so we just... So we'd just like to defer this, bring it back, and see if we've worked those issues out, and it, it could be passed in January or not. So I just want to, timeout till January 22nd to address all these issues.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez. Oh, did I, sorry. Councilmember Rivera.
Let me get this straight. You just heard Mr. Keithley tell you that both properties are still available. We're now entertaining delaying a decision on a low-barrier shelter until January 22nd, potentially, which is, you know, give or take three months from now. And we're going to use those three months to simply communicate why we're going to shove Calcott down your throat instead of evaluating the at least one other property that's available and anything else that might become available between now and January 22nd?
We got conflicting information. I suppose we can now evaluate both sites, even though we're not sure we can buy site two or one, the other site. I started by saying, let's evaluate both of sites. Then staff said, well, you really can't do that because the other one's not for sale. And then Mr. Keithley says, yes, it is for sale. I'm wondering if we can, if we can build in the flexibility to evaluate both sites if staff can confirm that they're both still viable and available. I don't have any problem valuing those two sites.
Okay. So they're, they're available, and I think the issue of viability is, is something we need to be clear about because we can, we can convince ourselves that Calcott is the end-all, be-all facility and the only place we want to go. So the reason I asked for an evaluation of other properties earlier, and why that was a part of my motion, was because I wanted to, I wanted to make that informed decision based on the facts. That's why I, that's why I asked for an evaluation of more than just Calcott. And that's what I'm asking you to do.
I have no, I don't want to broaden it to just start all over again. I think staff did a good job of going through the sites, the process, including Mr. Keithley, to what was viable and available. If it is those two sites, I'm fine with evaluating those two sites. What I don't want to do is say, let's just start all over again and throw everything out. I think that's a disservice to staff and to the community. So we've now extended to allow plenty of time to study these issues and see if we can get a lot of answers in the meantime, and bring this back and try to make a thoughtful decision on which one we want to move forward on. If it's, if it's the Calcott site, and if they choose to hold in there, then we have a lot of information on that already worked out. If it's the other site that's preferable, then we'll have to try to take a run at that one and see what happens. But I, I started off saying, it's fine, let's evaluate both those sites. What I don't want to say is, let's just start from scratch and evaluate 100 sites. I don't want to start all over again. We're too far down the road on this thing to do that. So I'll limit, I'll limit the evaluation to the two sites.
And perhaps anything that becomes available between now and January 22nd? Is there value to that?
Certainly, I'll, I'll include that.
Okay.
If something new pops up, sure, let's take a look at it. But there were a lot of community, I still want to focus on this community's needs and concerns because at the moment, the most viable site is the Calcott site. So I don't want to abandon all that work. And I do think it has a lot of merit. Okay, is, where are we in the phrasing?
We have additional requests to speak.
Okay.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, whatever we decide, at whatever location, I'd ask that the police department does a detailed assessment of the law enforcement and security needs for that location, whatever we decide. Also, I'd like to ask Public Works to also do a detailed assessment of infrastructure needs, including crosswalks, street widening, sidewalks, et cetera. Thank you.
Of the sites that we're studying? If it's two, it's both?
Whatever we're looking at, I want those assessments.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, part of due diligence. We need to answer that. Okay.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. Can I have the city attorney explain the differences between the two motions, so I know where we're at?
Mayor, Councilmember Smith, I'm going to try, and Councilman Rivera jump in if I miss something, but the way I see it is that the motion that you have on the table is by Councilmember Freeman, and it's to delay action on this matter until January 22nd and to allow staff to do a cost-benefit analysis of the available sites. And I interpret available sites as all M2 sites, and to do outreach to the community, at least with regard to the Calcott, the Calcott properties. The difference I see, Councilmember Smith, is that with Mr. Rivera's motion, it basically was not to take any actions forward in the negotiation or preparation of the purchase and sale agreement, which of course would not happen either under Councilmember Freeman's motion, but Councilman Rivera also asked for a special council meeting by the end of this month, and did not specify the M2 sites. They're very similar.
Can I ask Mr. Rivera where, what his preference is at this point?
With respect to?
Which motion?
Well, clearly, I, I felt like mine were great, which is why I made them. But I am, I am, I am more than willing to support Councilmember Freeman's motion to delay action until January 22nd with the understanding that, that the discussion on the 22nd will include a discussion and an evaluation of additional sites. It doesn't seem to me that, I, I, I'm not, I'm not asking us to start from scratch, and I, and that's not what I'm asking for, Councilmember Freeman, but I'm, I'm asking that an evaluation occur between more than just the one site. I'd rather not constrict staff's hands, but I'm willing to indulge folks.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. So as we evaluate additional sites, how will we reach out to the community? What is the strategy so that we can begin working to actually building an additional emergency, emergency shelter that we all know we need?
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Gonzalez, based upon the comments this evening, we will, as directed, reach out to the community surrounding the Calcott site and have that ongoing dialogue. In addition, what I want to mention for consideration, whether we're talking about the other site or something else that may come up, you know, in, in looking at that, we, in terms of providing a full cost proposal, there's negotiation, there are other components that go into that. And when we start to evaluate and have that dialogue, I think that's why, in part, the process played out like it did was in fact, one, at the request of the property owners that we were negotiating with, but two, it, it potentially creates challenges in terms of being able to provide a true capital cost and acquisition cost when we're, when, when we are having that dialogue. Ms. Kitchen, I would ask maybe you to maybe address that as well, in terms of, of kind of where we were in the process with the other site versus where we were with Calcott, once again, just for, for clarity purposes.
Council members and the mayor, so we were at that point of going back and forth talking about a price, and we hadn't agreed upon a price. The city's price point and the property owner's price point were still pretty far apart. But with this direction, we will go back to that property owner tomorrow and continue that discussion and see if we can enter into a letter of intent with that property owner as well. And we would structure that letter of intent to require that they allow us to go public with the conversation. I talked with the Realtor just a moment ago, and he indicated that we could go forward and have two letters of intent simultaneously.
Good. Thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez, anything further?
Just, I want to underscore the point and make a referral that staff work when they identify that additional site or sites, and as soon as it is possible, to reach out to those respective communities as well.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to clarify really quick with Willie, Bruce. Are you good with Bruce's motion, or besides yours being great, I just want to make sure?
Yeah, thank you. Let's do it this way. Could, could I ask the city attorney to repeat the motion we're about, I'm assuming we're getting ready to take a vote, so why don't we have her repeat the motion we're being asked to consider?
My understanding, Mayor and council, is that the motion that's being made and is on the table right now is to delay action on the item in front of you until January 22nd and to allow staff to evaluate and bring back on that date the cost-benefit analysis of not just the Calcott site, but any other M2 sites that may be available. And part of that is to also do an outreach to the community on those available sites.
And to answer your question, I am fine with that motion.
Okay. Colleagues, anything else? You, we have the motion that the city attorney just restated. You have a motion, please catch your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your participation. I know that you feel very passionate about this, continue to engage in dialogue with us public. You're welcome to stay. We have many more items still to consider. But let's take a 10-minute break right now, and we'll see you back here in about 10 minutes. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Also under the workshops title, we've got item B, presentation by Development Services Department on Affordable Housing.
Well, welcome to our new director. Please introduce yourself.
Well, thank you, Mayor Go, councilmembers. My name is Christopher Boyle. I'm your new Development Services Director, and it's comforting to know the crowd wasn't here for me. That said, Development Services would like to present your second item on, on tonight's workshop agenda. That would be a workshop on affordable housing. And I'd like to introduce two of the Development Services staff. That would be Principal Planners Nina Carter and Cecilia Griego. Thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. And this is a good follow-up conversation to what we did have. Kind of, this is the agenda, this is kind of, we're going to quickly kind of go over these three areas, basically what is considered affordable housing in Bakersfield. Looking at Bakersfield's housing need, kind of little short overview of our housing element, and associated with that, our annual housing progress reports. And then at that point, I will pass the torch over to my colleague Nina, and she will go over kind of Bakerfield's affordable housing, what we've been doing the past 10 years, kind of taking a look of what it takes to build and fund affordable housing, and kind of addressing some solutions going forward. First thing I'd like to do is, you know, we've all, we know all the cities trying to take those critical, critical steps to address homelessness, and really to get, we all know, to get that really permanent solution to homelessness, so that people can gain that independence and stability, is in affordable housing. And first, I kind of want to go over what is considered affordable housing in Bakersfield. You know, we all, we have our own income levels, our own unique demographics here, so that's really, we kind of have to look at that community, community, and seeing what is considered affordable in our community. So in this slide, you see basically the, what's considered both very low, low, moderate, and above moderate, and what those incomes are that fit within that. And then next to that, you see what is considered affordable monthly housing cost, whether it's rent or, but also built into that is rent, utilities, taxes, insurance. Every, all of those items are considered a housing cost. And basically affordability is defined as a household spending less than 30% of their income on housing costs. And kind of looking at, at the county level, where most of this is kind of looking at the income needed to afford a median, a monthly rent, which is around $915, currently is about $17.60 an hour. This is kind of looking at the cost burden. Even those who are lucky enough to have a home, sometimes they are burdened with the cost of those homes. So looking at both renters and owners in the city of Bakersfield, you can see a renter over, you know, 49% is, is doing good, but you can see nearly 50% is, has a cost burden between 30 to 50, and some even 26, even more of a cost burden. Owners, not so much, but there still is a cost burden on some of those also homeowners. Basically, kind of looking wide, that means putting numbers to it. In 2016, over 41,000 households paid over 30% of their income on housing costs. That's about 30%, 37% of households in the city. And of that 37%, over half were paying over 50% of their income on housing costs. Now I'm going to talk about a little bit of the Bakersfield's housing need. Basically, their housing need is assessed in our housing element, and basically, our housing element is the city's plan to meet the housing needs of the community. For each housing element cycle, the California Department of Housing and Community Development determines the city's housing need via its ARENA, which is a regional housing needs assessment. And then CURRENT COLLEGE further divides that per jurisdiction, both each city in the county and in the unincorporated area. So you can see our ARENA for our current housing element, which covers the plan period between 2015 and 2023, we need, you know, over 36,000 housing units. And part of assessing that need, we have to look at our vacant acres and zoning that can accommodate our housing need. So we did an inventory of all our vacant land that accommodates residential by right. So you can see, we have plenty of vacant acres, and we did a unit capacity based on the density allowed in those vacant areas. You can see we have plenty of capacity to meet our need. Kind of looking, digging down into that inventory analysis, looking at just what our capacity is for the low income and very low income, you can see the zones and the acreage in those zones that provide our, our housing need. So you can see for low income, it's the R2 zone that has the most capacity to address our housing need, over 93%. And, and for very, very low, it's actually our CC zone that has the biggest capacity with the second is our R3 zone. You can see even in some of our more denser residential zones, there's not much vacant acreage left to accommodate housing. So that's something we can definitely explore further when we develop our general plan. This is a look of our annual progress report. So you can see, basically, starting in 2017, the state designated housing as a statewide concern. So starting that year, we, we submitted our housing report, and we, they allowed us, even though we weren't required to, they allowed us to count our housing back to 2013, which is when our housing element period starts. So you can see, since 2013, we've permitted nearly 10,000 housing units, which is about 25% of our need. And you can see, and we're required to report it on the four income levels, so very low, low, moderate, and above moderate. This, as you can see, we've, you know, we've, there's still, even though we've built enough housing, there's still a lot of need, and I'm going to pass my, the torch on to Nina, who's going to go over how we're taking, how both the state and the city are taking various steps to address this.
Thank you. Ms. Carter?
Good evening. If you remember, at the, at a couple council meetings back, the question was posed to staff as to why only two units, affordable housing units, were developed in 2018 or reported on the housing element in 2018. And I hope to bring a little bit of clarity to that question. In this, in this graph right here, you can see that the main sources of funding that we receive for affordable for affordable housing are RDA, NSP through the federal government, and home through the federal government. In this graph, you'll see that the, these, this shows the amount of funds that we're able to allocate each year to affordable housing construction. And if you start with the blue line, that's RDA properties, RDA funding, you can see that, taking away that 2015 outlier, there's a trend going down for RDA funds. And in that 2015, the reason why it's so high is because in 2012, RDA was dissolved, and then we were able to use the remaining funds to finish off projects. And you see the results of that in 2015 and 2016. And also, if you look at the home funds in gray, you'll see a gradual decrease of those as well. And all of those seem to come together right there at 2017 and 2018, which is why we have a smaller amount, a very small amount of affordable housing units constructed. The city was not able and did not have the funds to be able to incentivize affordable housing in the city. But if you look at the overall graph, you'll see that, it doesn't show here, but this reflects that 600 affordable housing units have been built throughout the past 10 years. And that's an average of 60, 60 units a year. So if you look at the overall 10 years, but we do see those funds having drastic changes in 2017 and 2018. So this was not just a Bakersfield issue. We saw these funds lowering regionally as well. And in this graph, done by the California Housing Partnership, you can see that from 2008 to 2017, there was a drastic change in redevelopment in the county, going from, going down 100%. And then, in the same years, for state housing and bonds and housing programs, we see that that goes down 96%. And then, the same with HUD at 19%, with an overall decrease in funding for affordable housing from the state and the federal government by 73%. So, we also want to look at what it takes to build affordable housing. How much does it cost? So, it's very expensive to build affordable housing with state and federal funding. There's prevailing ways that you have to consider. There's higher building standards. And there's a low profit margin for developers. And so, when we don't have enough incentives to give them, it's difficult for them to, difficult for them to make any profit to construct. They have to compete for tax credits, which, as you see, went down in the past. So it looks like 287,000 per unit for an affordable housing development. This is an example, this is a current example of the residents at East Hills, and this is for an 81-unit complex. So, the state, both the state and locally, we've been responding to this issue, and we feel that we're gaining the necessary tools to help move those, move those margins up. So at the statewide level, they've passed a 15-bill housing package. These include housing element accountability investments to state housing loans for developers, increase in tax credits. They've put money to help cities plan out how to bring in more affordable housing. And they've also put together a permanent local allocation for cities, such as the city of Bakersfield. And we anticipate that this might be 1.6 million this coming year. And locally, with the passage of PSVS, we've been able to allocate this year approximately 2.1 for affordable housing. We've also been able to hire new staff to focus on housing programs and applying for new grants. We can work on the general plan to help facilitate more affordable housing in the city. And we can continue to work to develop a long-term strategy to increase affordable housing with measurable outcomes. And so, looking forward, from coming next year, we will have the home allocation that we regularly get of about 1.4 million. We will also have PSVS allocation of about 2.1 million. The permanent local housing allocation from the state of about 1.6 million. And then, we have some previous home funds in the amount of 1.4 million. So that's a total of 6.5 million that we can use for affordable housing just next year. We also have 139 units that have already been committed with funds by council that we hope to bring into construction soon. And so, what do we have now as far as, how can developers get these funds? Right now, we have two RFPs out, one for, one for the PSVS Affordable Housing Fund, and another one for the Home Application Funds. Those are both due November 22nd, and we've been getting calls from developers already. The SB2 Planning Grant, which is also on the agenda tonight as a resolution to apply, is due November 30th, and we, we plan to apply for that with your approval. And then, the PSVS funds, we hope to award those by February of 2020, and the home funds by May of 2020 through the regular action plan cycle. And we are also committed as staff to increase affordable housing production, work with the community, and meet our RENA needs. And so with that, I'd just like to pass the presentation to our director for final comments.
Thank you, Ms. Griego, Ms. Carter. So, in looking at the workshop, there's really three takeaways. The first takeaway would be that Bakersfield's not alone in affordable housing and the drawdown in available housing, affordable housing in this community. I would, coming from an outside municipality, I would say that Bakersfield's done a great job in terms of providing housing and looking to satisfy its RENA with the resources that were there. It's averaged over 1,400 units a year, and that's pretty robust compared to other cities that have had to work their way out of the Great Recession. The second takeaway is that the reasons for that were out of Bakersfield's control. The Great Recession, the elimination of RDA and the resources that were provided there, and the slow rejuvenation of funds from, from state and other agencies led to, as the chart shows, very few, very few low and very low affordable units coming onto the market. Staff wasn't able to generate those units without those resorts being available. And the third takeaway, looking forward, would be that a lot of those opportunities are coming back, and that staff will look aggressively to capture those monies, to partner those monies with, with other monies, and bring about additional housing stock moving forward. That completes our presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I get this is all new housing. How's this relate to housing vouchers that we talked about previously? Does, does any of these monies include vouchers? If we're trying to move the previous discussion, homeless people to housing, and we need vouchers, any of this money available for that?
Well, in speaking to HUD housing vouchers, that's a, that's a program that's provided by the federal government. And it certainly is part of the solution, but it's not really topical to what we're doing right here and now in terms of adding additional housing inventory into the city's inventory of low and very low income housing units. That typically means the development of new units that then, in some cases, become available for housing vouchers through HUD. In other cases, those projects are operated by other entities through various, through various mechanisms, whether that be through deed-restricted projects that have restrictions on, on housing over the, over a 30-year lifespan, or other mechanisms that provide assurances for very low and low income.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Rivera, and just for clarification here, we've had two requests from the public to speak, and we're going to allow that this evening, just as we did earlier. So, okay, you wait. Very good. Madam City Clerk, would you please call the first public speaker?
Adyinka Glover.
Thank you.
Okay. So I do know that I spoke briefly during the public comment period. I think that this opportunity to speak while a workshop is happening is critically important, just like the city council members may have questions regarding the presentation, the public could have the same. In fact, some residents came this evening specifically to be able to ask questions, but it's difficult to ask questions without knowing what the presentation includes. On the topic of what the presentation included, our office sent an email, a detailed email on September 20th, stating very specifically what residents that we've worked with wanted to hear from this presentation. And just to quote a couple of items, they wanted to hear about how the housing element intersected, intersects with public, or sorry, community development. For example, parks, libraries. And they wanted to be able to know how certain projects could connect, because they have interest in converting empty lots to gardens, spray parks, and pools. The other topic on affordable housing that they wanted to know more about is about the housing element programs and how they can access those programs. And I feel like this presentation that was provided, while it is an overview of affordable housing, excluded what residents specifically wanted to hear as a follow-up of the annual progress report, or I should say, following the annual progress report meeting. I had an opportunity to speak with the city attorney, and I did make a comment that we have concerns that there was a Brown Act violation. And I just wanted to cite the code. It would be Government Code 54954.3A. And folks who would come here to hear the presentation, while it was a longer city council meeting than typical, many have left, and so there isn't that same opportunity to hear the presentation. And so, one request that we have is that this item be brought back on another time. Another topic that was excluded in the list of affordable housing options was again, the Affordable Housing Sustainable Communities Program, which the application cycle is open right now, and again, up to $30 million can be applied for. The Housing Authority has been successful in the past collaborating with partners, including our organization for bringing affordable housing to LaMotta, a 41-unit, specifically 40-unit affordable housing complex that even had a community center and a lot of greenhouse gas emission inclusions. And just for my final comment, we ask that the city council and staff really support an Affordable Housing Sustainable Communities application. Thank you for this round, round five.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Troy Hightower. Good evening. My name is Troy Hightower. It's been a long evening, Mayor and council members and staff. I'll try and be brief. My interest is really to support community and economic development and the opportunities that the city and the community has with Measure N and other things. When it comes to affordable housing, some of the, I appreciate the presentation was made by staff, but I think there's some things that they have not considered, such as using funds, working with developer to leverage the funds that the city may have towards grant applications, in particular, like the HSC that Mr. Yaber mentioned. That will allow a developer to provide, to apply for grant funding for affordable housing. That could be very attractive, as well as meet the profit goals of the developer and the investor. So I think that's something I encourage the council to really consider, ways that you can, you can use to leverage this money to not just pay totally for affordable housing, but work with developers and leverage the funds with other funds that may be available. I did want to comment on the presentation about RENA and capacity and meeting the needs. It's indicated that we do have the capacity. However, we are, we're not close to meeting the need. And I think now is the time that we can work together and with community groups to find ways to, ways we hadn't looked at before, to provide affordable housing in the community. And I believe providing affordable housing community is an economic development issue. And I think that homelessness is a result of lack of economic development. And so with that, in closing, I just would suggest that the council and staff look at other opportunities and ways to enhance the dollars we now have to create more affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hightower. Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you, Mayor. My assumption, this is an ongoing conversation. So I, I don't imagine that the presentation we've received tonight is, is the end of this. But I do think we're occupying a new space, which I think has a potential to be really, really exciting on the affordable housing front. So, I guess I have a few items I want to throw out there for, for staff's consideration and perhaps maybe in a follower, follow-up report. There, there are a few things I've been curious about the feasibility of. And one is, one relates to traffic impact fees. So in one of the slides, it broke out, a project, you know, gave us the unit costs, and then it gave us the project costs, construction costs, the developer fee. And, and there was, you know, also a line item related to the traffic impact fees. I understand we have rebated fees in the core of Bakersfield. I don't know that perhaps every project that comes our way falls into that core, but I would like to explore the feasibility of either further reducing fees for affordable housing projects within that core, and then also allowing or extending that to affordable housing projects outside of our core. And I, you know, I think that's a conversation worth having. And if it's some, if we're really interested in getting units online, it seems to me that might be a positive step forward. I think Councilmember Smith asked a great question with respect to vouchers. And I do see it, I see it as a part of this conversation. And so, I'm, I'm not under the impression that we're necessarily allocating any more dollars than we have in the past to fund vouchers, say, at the Housing Authority. And I think we could. I think we all know there's a long list of folks waiting, and that's impacted not only by unit availability, but by cost. And so, I do wonder whether or not, in the affordable housing sphere, whether we could make a commitment to fund additional vouchers because we're talking about this continuum of care and this pipeline of getting folks from one place to another. And I see that as, as an, as an integral part of the puzzle. So I would like us to explore how to, how to maybe realize that somehow. And then the other item I just wanted to clarify is, I'm aware of the $5 million notice of funding we have for Measure N dollars that's available now. And I know we have a request out for the home funds we have. But in one of the slides, it was mentioned that we have $6.5 million next year. I guess my question was, is that $6.5 million in addition to the $5 million notice we have now and that home notice, or are we kind of carrying stuff over into next year?
I can answer that. The $5 million, if you, can we pull up the slide, maybe? The $5 million on the, was not on that added up? The $5 million on the, was not on that, added up in that 6.5 million, because on the report that we have, the admin report, it looked like it may have been reduced to 1, 2.1, but maybe there have been changes because we haven't moved forward with the Calcut site. So we might be able to move that, the $5 million may still be available, but we have this, let me move it back. Can we start it again? So looking at this slide, we have 2020, the next, the new home funds. So that's the application that's out right now. And then we have the PSVS allocation, that's the 5 million. So it says 2.1 just because there was...
Because we were spending the rest on Calcut?
Maybe not.
Okay.
Or maybe. So that's why that's changed there. But if we add that back, then it's closer to 10 million.
Okay. Okay, thank you. The one other request I'd ask for us to kind of explore, and I know I've met with you and Mr. Burns and others about this as well, is trying to create a more effective mechanism for taking advantage of vacant residential lots. And so when we had redevelopment agencies, the city was essentially in the business of picking up some of these properties, you know, with the ultimate goal of revitalizing and redeveloping them, or utilizing them for beneficial uses. We've had surplus land we've now, you know, attempted to dispense with, we've entered into contracts with Habitat for Humanity and others to build homes on those lots, but we're not necessarily picking up any new ones. And I think there are barriers for private investors to picking those up, whether it's lean or substantial fees associated with building something that I think might be worth exploring as well, because I do believe, one, in areas built out, perhaps traffic impact fees could be further reduced, and two, it seems to me, building something on that land is still better for the city in the long run, even monetarily speaking, than having it sit vacant because we've decided we want to hold on to that lean or something else. So I would ask, you know, that we kind of put our thinking caps on and how we might tap into those vacant lots further and see whether or not it's appropriate for the city to maybe begin a program of picking some of those up with the purpose of turning them around and offering them to worthwhile groups looking to build homes, and perhaps there's an answer to that question right now.
Well, I, not to that specific question, but related, but that's definitely a strategy we can look at going forward, but I wanted to address with your wish to do fee reductions. One of the things we can do with our SB2 planning grant is to explore that and do a plan to implement, you know, there like an affordable housing ordinance, or implementation strategy, or incentive strategy. We can explore that with our SB2 planning grant and make that a scope of work and look into that.
I would love to add that if I could make that request.
Okay.
And then maybe we can just get the state to pay for it, whatever the offset is, and then we'll be fine. That's all I got, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, mayor. Development Services, can you tell me if you've had an opportunity to sit down with this group and talk about it, any ideas yet?
I have not had the opportunity to sit down with it, but with this group, but I'd welcome an opportunity.
Okay, if you could reach out to them and maybe set something, I think that might be an opportunity.
Most certainly.
Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. I just want to go back to the $287,000 per unit for affordable housing and, I'm going to beat my dead horse, accessory dwelling unit. I know we can build those for 60,000 to 70,000, and then a housing voucher of $700, you know, gets people in housing. And so any way that we can push vouchers in that direction to incentivize that, I think is also a good move. Do you have a comment? Great.
I just wanted to say, if you look at the admin for the SB2 planning grant resolution that is on your, in there, one of the proposals is doing an ADU incentive program. So one of the things we want to explore is doing architectural denies.
Pre-plans, right?
Yeah, pre-plans, so set up and say, and to streamline that process, streamline that process. Also, if they choose to make it affordable, meaning they record a deed restriction or something that we can consider affordable, we can offer them a grant, I don't know if we can do voucher, but we can offer them a grant as an incentive to, with funds doing that, so.
Great, thank you.
Any other comments, colleagues? So at this point?
Motion to receive and file.
Thank you, if a motion to receive and...
Is it possible to make a quick comment on the council members' comments?
You wish to? Go ahead. We typically don't do this at this late hour. We are going out of the norm.
I understand this, and from the beginning, this has not been typical, but I just want to make some quick comments on Councilmember Rivera's comments about some incentives that are typically available for affordable housing, such as reduced parking requirements. These are things that developers like, and as Councilmember Smith mentioned, the pricing of building housing, the SGC, the state grant, will provide $80,000 for homes. So if we can look at how we can partner with developers and seek those grants, that's another opportunity. And vouchers are available. There's more vouchers available than the supply. So if you look at supply and demand, if you get more supply, the 915 average they mentioned would go down. Thank you, this is a very important issue, and that's why I'm here, and I appreciate your time as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hightower. You have a motion to receive and file?
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you, next item, please.
Consent calendar items 8A through 8P for approval.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, mayor. Does any council member wish to recuse themselves from an item? Does any council member wish to remove an item from consent for separate consideration? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion that we approve consent calendar items 8A through 8P, as in Paul, for approval.
You have a motion, please cash your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Our next item is the public hearings. Before I open the first public hearing, I'll go over the presentation time policy. Each side is allowed 15 minutes. It's 15 minutes for all speakers, so it's important that you identify yourself and make your statement quickly so others may speak. We'll hear statements first from those opposed to staff's recommendation, then we'll hear from those in favor of staff's recommendation. If there's testimony on both sides, both, each side will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal. There's a clock on the wall behind me, which indicates 15 minutes. Please step to the mic and identify yourself. After 14 minutes, a yellow light will come on, and at the end of 15 minutes, a red light will flash indicating that your time is up. You may ask questions during your statement, but they won't be answered until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your statements, please give those to the clerk, and she'll distribute those to the council. Please be courteous to others who wish to speak. Unless there's approval by the majority of the council, there's a strict 15-minute time limit for all those in favor or opposition to staff's recommendation. Madam Clerk, would you please read the first public hearing item?
Cancellation of a public hearing regarding bond financing for the Housing Authority of the County of Kern.
Thank you. We have a cancellation, but Mr. Boyle, would you go ahead and comment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor, council. Title, title needs just a slight change to it. The item before you is largely procedural. We can't cancel the public hearing because in essence, we've noticed a public hearing in the newspaper. The action before you, though, is unnecessary, and that alternative funding has been found for this project, so no action is necessary on the resolution or the indemnification agreement that's before you. Thus, staff would recommend opening a public hearing, but no action is necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Boyle. So it would be appropriate for me to open up the public hearing at this point. Is there anybody who would like to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? Seeing none, anybody wish to speak in support? Seeing none? I'll close the public hearing and return it now to council for comment and action. There's really no need for any comment or action at this point. So let's proceed now, Madam Clerk, with the next public hearing item.
Item B, appealed by Dowling Aaron Incorporated of the September 10, 2019 decision of the Board of Zoning Adjustment to deny a conditional use permit to allow a recycling center within a state-recognized convenience zone for the purchase of a California redemption value containers from the public in a C2 regional commercial zone district located at 830 Union Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Boyle.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. I'll ask the planning director, Mr. Kevin Coyle, to make this presentation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. At the September 10 Board of Zoning Adjustment meeting, the board considered CUP application 18-0397 to allow a recycling center within a state-recognized convenience zone. And as the clerk mentioned earlier, the facility as proposed would be located at 830 Union Avenue in a zoning district of C2. Development in the area, the site itself is a fuel station with a convenience store. To the north is an undeveloped lot. To the east is multifamily residential. To the south are vacant commercial buildings, and to the west is a motel. This is a project overview that the Board of Zoning Adjustment received, basically an 800-square-foot area, a couple of containers, two employees, and seven-day operation from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. As was mentioned in the introduction, a convenience zone is something that is established in California law relative to the recycling and the redemption of those recycling containers. And that convenience zone is established by drawing a half-mile radius circle around a supermarket, and a supermarket is also defined in the code. CalRecycle will reimburse recyclers approximately one cent per redeemed can or bottle. However, if you have two CRV facilities within a convenience zone, neither one of those facilities would be eligible for that redemption from CalRecycle. So in effect, granting a CUP permit to the facility at 830 Union would effectively put the CRV facility at 349 Union out of business. Just some additional background, the facility at 830 Union had previously been granted a conditional use permit for a CRV facility, but due to ongoing violations and a settlement agreement with the city, that facility lost its ability to recycle in 2018. While the CRV facility at 830 Union was not in operation, the CRV facility at 349 Union went through a site plan review. That was the regulation at the time, and they were located within that convenience zone. So tonight, you, like the Board of Zoning Adjustment, is being asked to make a couple of findings in order to grant the CUP, and staff's recommendation is based on what we saw. We cannot support those findings, and therefore, we would recommend that the council uphold the board's denial of CUP application 18-0397. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Boyle, do you have anything further before I open? Thank you. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. How many people would like to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? Just one? Okay, go ahead and come on up. Please introduce yourself and go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Justin Thomas, and I represent Yadwinder Singh, the owner of the property in question at 830 Union Avenue. He is the applicant of the conditional use permit to allow recycling at the center on the property and the appellate of the appeal of the Board of Zoning Adjustment' decision to deny that permit. We respectfully disagree with the zoning board's decision, and we respectfully believe that the board failed to apply the appropriate standard, resulting in a mistake when deciding on this issue. In light of all the evidence presented during the permit hearing, substantial evidence exists to support granting the permit. There is broad support for the permit, and if the appropriate standard is applied, we believe there's four reasons why the permit should have been granted. The first being that public policy supports permitting the permit. The second being the planning department staff supported approving the permit. And third, Mr. Singh acquired about 100 signatures from residents who signed a petition in support of the recycling center, as well as additional multiple witnesses appeared and testified that the reopening of the recycling center at 830 Union would be much more convenient for them. And finally, the fourth reason being that precedent of other recently granted conditional use permits identical to this permit have been approved in support of approval of this permit. I'm sure the council is aware of the legal standard at issue, but just to quickly frame the context of this appeal, Mr. Singh was denied due process. When a board or council makes a land use decision, such as a conditional use permit, it's an administrative act. In order for due process to be met for such administrative acts, findings must support the decision, and substantial evidence must support those findings. The decision may not be arbitrary or contrary to the law or ordinance. In this case, Bakersfield's ordinance, as with many cities, states that the permit shall be granted if it's found that the proposed use is deemed essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare, and the proposed use is in harmony with the various elements and objectives of the general plan and applicable specific plans. It's important to note that the requirements of the first finding is that it's essential or desirable. This is a disjunctive categories, meaning there are alternatives, and finding either one will satisfy the finding. Here, Mr. Singh seeks a permit to allow a recycling center, and the public policy supports granting this permit. In the California Beverage Container Recycling Litter Reduction Act, California, the legislature's intent is stated in section 14501, and that is as follows. "It is the intent of the legislator to make redemption of recycling convenient to consumers, and the legislation hereby urges cities and counties, when exercising their zoning authority, to act favorably on the setting of recycling centers." In addition, at the time of the hearing for the board, the planning department recommended approval. All the relevant evidence that was known at the time and that was presented at the hearing was already included in the report, including the sole opposition to the conditional use permit, as well as the existence of the other recycling center that was nearby. And yet, the staff still recommended that it be approved. The staff report for that app... The staff report for that application stated, in pertinent part, "The staff finds the proposed recycling center would help to facilitate the collection of recyclable materials, aiding the city in its efforts to comply with state recycling requirements. The location of the recycling center utilizing enclosed metal storage containers should provide sufficient safeguards for the nearby residential development, and the project would result in development that is consistent with the intent of both the Metropolitan General Business Plan or General Plan and the Metropolitan or the Bakersfield Municipal Code." At the time the staff issued the report, like I said, there was only one opposition to the conditional use permit, and this was from an out-of-town property owner of nearby apartments who opposed the conditional use permit based on a baseless accusation that recycling creates crime. The staff report addressed the opposition, proposed conditions to safeguard against those concerns. And as I said, there's no new evidence in opposition to the permit that was known at the time the staff recommended approval. The staff put in the report that the other recycling center was existing at that point, and the location of where it was from the proposed location in this moment. I have a map in a second. However, at the board hearing, the hearing focused on the word "essential" from that finding and the ordinance, and was it essential to have a recycling center when there is another center nearby? And the problem with that, it's not the standard. And two, as I'll show later, this hasn't stopped other permits from being issued nearby, issued nearby other recycling centers that exist. In fact, we'll show, in July, in July, two conditional use permits were issued which were even closer than existing recycling centers. So at the hearing, the board member stated around the 51-minute mark that, just to confirm in this quoting, "Just to confirm, it looks like according to Google that the other facility is less than a mile away. It appears to be about a seven-minute walk, four-minute bike ride, and a one-minute vehicle drive. Based upon everything in my view, one of the findings we have to make is, is this deemed essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare?" So I'm looking at, is this essential to the public convenience? And there is literally a recycling center a couple blocks up the street. The question is not whether the recycling center is essential, but the standard is actually whether it's essential or desirable. And the evidence provided was substantial in showing that the convenient recycling center was desirable with over 100 signatures provided in the petition, as well as at the time, the staff approving or recommending that the CUP be approved. It is not substantial evidence to find that one opposition from somebody who didn't live in the area would be substantial evidence to say that it wasn't desirable. As I mentioned earlier, the zoning board has recently granted other additional conditional use permits that are identical to this. So what we're looking at here is a map of the area in Bakersfield in question, and I got this off of CalRecycle's website yesterday. And it shows the recycling centers in the area. The blue marks are the ones that are existing, and the red mark is the conditional use permit in question. I have added the addresses next to them for reference. But, so the existing recycling center is 349 Union. The proposed is 830 Union in red. In January, or in July of 2019, the Board of Adjustments approved a conditional use permit of the recycling center at 1414 E. California. And this is approximately a half-mile from the recycling center at 1825 East California. Also, on July 9th, 2019, the Board approved the conditional use permit to allow the recycling center at 699 Brundage Lane, which is approximately two miles from the recycling center at 1070 Brundage Lane. In addition to the permit for 699 Brundage Lane, that conditional use permit received opposition, which is nearly identical to the argument that was introduced to the conditional use permit at the center of this appeal. And the staff responded, saying that the conditions imposed for that conditional use permit at 699 was addressed by the conditions they imposed. In addition, the 699 East Brundage Lane recycling center is less than a mile from 349 Union Recycling Center. The point being is, as stated by the California Legislature, the purpose is to make it convenient to recycle. Accordingly, there is no evidence, much less substantial evidence, that the Board's decision to deny the CUP for the 830 Union Avenue, when it has approved other recycling center CUPs, including those nearly identical in situation, was not arbitrary or contrary to the law or ordinance. In contrast, the evidence is clear, the decision to deny Mr. Singh's CUP was contrary to the ordinance and was completely unlawful or arbitrary. Thank you for your time. We are confident that the council will find, based on the substantial evidence standard, that the permit for the 830 Union Avenue should be granted. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. We have four minutes left. Is there anybody who would like to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? This is in opposition to staff's recommendation?
No.
I was wondering. Okay. And now is the opportunity, who would like to speak in support of staff's recommendation?
Good night. My name is Alondra Medina. I'm the owner of the existing recycling center in 349 Union Avenue. I'm here supporting the staff recommendation. Back in 2009, I was operating the recycling center at 830 Union Avenue. I stayed there for approximately three years, and then Mr. Singh asked me for the property because he wanted to run the business. So I withdrew, and I never tried to open the recycling in the same area because the state only requires one recycle per convenience zone, sorry. They determined that only one recycling is enough. Then in 2018, I was checking the handling fees list, and I see that their place was available. So I called to the CalRecycle and the city to see if there was any pending application, and then they say the place was free, the area was free. So I decided to apply in the zone. I find a better place, it's in a corner, and it's accessible for pedestrians and cars to, and safer to get there. If the other business opens or is approved, both him and myself will lose the state help, so the new business will put both out of business. The handling fees that the state gives help me to have my business stand up. My workers will be affected too because they will work less or maybe lose their job. I have no complaints from business and residents. Actually, I got supporting signatures from business individuals. I have these, and I want to give to the city clerk and the city attorney. To conclude, since 2009 up to today, only was one recycle, has been enough to cover that zone. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in support of staff's recommendation? Please introduce yourself.
Gabor Godinez, Madam Mayor, council member, staff, city clerk. Thank you. I represent the Stop and Recycle location, and my client had just spoke and also referenced a petition that she has been able to acquire with signatures in opposition to another recycling center in this particular zone. The historical approach and what staff had addressed was correct and accurate, that there has remained one in this particular zone. And when the previous license had lapsed, then my client went and sought to remain with one in this particular zone. Now, we've heard from the opposition that there have been other-like permits given, but those were not within the same zone, which would then trigger or vitiate my client's ability to receive the benefits she gets from the state recycling. So the actions by the Planning Commission and in line with what the staff recommendation is, is that yes, another one in the zone is not essential, and the documentation we have here, well, is further evidence, which I would like to give to staff so they have it for the record. Well, when I'm done, I'll breach the well to hand that over, is that it's not essential, nor is it desirable. And so in line with keeping with the community standards, and we believe the approach and what was done and the decision made is appropriate and prudent in this matter. There's been a lot of talk from the opposition for the staff recommendation, based on what, while the staff recommended XYZ, they should stick with XYZ. Well, that same argument applies here. Staff has recommended denial of this particular CUP, and we believe with the additional information that we're going to provide, with the oppositions from local residents, and there's also attached for opposition from local businesses, that only one is desirable and only one is essential in the particular zone. So with that, I encourage the council to adhere to staff's recommendation and to approve the denial. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I breach the well to give this?
Yes, please. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in support of staff's recommendation? Seeing none, we have an opportunity now for a five-minute rebuttal. Is there anybody who would like to rebut in opposition? Please come forward.
Yes, I'd just like to address the issue of the handling fees, and I think it's, when you look at the statute granting the handling fees, I think it's kind of a perversion to start using that as a barrier for whether or not the recycling, additional recycling centers can open. The only reason it exists in the first place is an incentive. That's it. The reason why you don't need it anymore if another one opens is because clearly, an incentive isn't needed. People are willing to put the recycling in without it. The statute specifically calls it an incentive, and it says, "When the second one shows up, it's no longer needed." The logic being, it's there if nobody else is willing to do it, and if someone else is willing to open a recycling center, they should be allowed to do it. The exact same statute says, cities and counties should be, they urge cities and counties to be favorable in granting permits for recycling. If there are other, if the signatures that my client provided are closer, and if you look at the map that I showed, that corner going the other direction is even further from any existing recycling center. So there's, it's serving people who want to recycle and making it more convenient, which is the purpose of the public policy that's put in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Is there anyone who would like to rebut in support?
Madam Mayor, council members, thank you. Yes, the city is properly exercising its zoning authority. That was a term we heard earlier. We're properly exercising our zoning authority and allowing, and has continued to allow one recycling center within the zone. So I encourage the council to do the same. There is consistency there. There isn't, and it's allowing for what's prescribed in the statute. So we're not denying it. There's one existing. So we believe and we encourage to adopt staff's recommendation in denying the conditional use permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to rebut in support? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and return it to council for comment and action. Councilmember Rivera, this is in your district. Would you like to begin?
Thank you, Mayor. So I think in addition to staff findings and the conclusions in the staff report, I'm also aware, I drove by the 349 Union Avenue property, and I'm also very much aware of the 830 Union Avenue property, when it once, when it had a recycling facility. And I'll be honest, it was not operated well. And I think 349 Union Avenue looks fantastic. So with that, and in support of staff's findings, I'll move their recommendation to deny the appeal.
Thank you. Does anybody wish to comment? Seeing none, you have a motion.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Under deferred business, we have adoption of an ordinance, Amendment Section 17.58.120 of the Bakersfield Municipal Code relating to parking space requirements within the Central District and other mixed-use areas. The first reading of this ordinance occurred October 23rd.
Thank you. Staff, do you wish to make comment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. Mr. Coyle, as well as Principal Planner Paul Johnson, will make that presentation.
Thank you.
Good evening again, Madam Mayor and honorable members of council. This process began with a referral on September 11th of 2019 from Councilman Smith. I believe the purpose of the referral was to look at the downtown parking as an opportunity to offer another incentive for redevelopment in the Central District downtown. Central District is defined as Golden State Avenue to the north, California Avenue to the south, F Street to the west, and V Street to the east. As you know, the city accepted a downtown parking study in April of 2018, and the city has already taken steps to implement some of those recommendations from the study. They've changed the parking time signs, they've improved parking enforcement, they've made improvements to the parking garage. And I should just mention, in terms of the parking garage, we have statistics that show that that garage is only operating at about 50% capacity, so there is parking in the Another example is the G Street Parking Mall between 18th and 20th Streets, which has increased parking capacity downtown, as well as provided some traffic calming to be more considerate of pedestrians downtown. Two points that I would like to make regarding the amendment to code that's being proposed. One is the fact that we are saying no additional parking would be required based on a change of use. So we've been using examples of converting banks to restaurants, so sticking with that example. If a bank had been required to provide 10 parking spaces, now wants to be a restaurant, that restaurant is still going to have to provide those 10 parking spaces, even though the parking calculation is very different for banks and restaurants. A bank parking requirement is one space per 300 square feet. In a restaurant, it's one space per 75 square feet, so you basically need four times more parking spaces for a restaurant. But this ordinance- But this ordinance would allow you to change from a bank to a restaurant and not require any additional parking. We're not waiving parking, we're just saying you wouldn't be required to provide more parking. And the second thing is, it's just another tool in the toolbox for encouraging redevelopment and the use of the buildings in the downtown area. That essentially concludes my presentation for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. Anything further?
Nothing additional to add.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, staff, for the workshop. I appreciate that, or at least the presentation. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Thank you. Any requests to speak or comment?
No.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm sorry, there was a comment earlier that seems to believe I have a conflict here, so I will abstain from this vote. Thank you.
Thank you. So you have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, with Councilmember Weir voting against, and Councilmember Smith abstaining.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Under new business, we have a resolution setting the dates of the regular city council meetings, budget hearings, and department budget presentations for calendar year 2020.
Thank you. Mr. Hewat.
Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers, I will make this brief. You should have received a blue memo either up on the dais or within the agenda system that reflects the latest version of the calendar that staff is recommending for adoption for next calendar year of 2020. This takes into consideration conferences such as the League of California Cities and other potential conflicts, and it also reflects budget hearings, noon budget workshops, both in the May and June months. So with that, staff is recommending adoption of the resolution as outlined in the blue memo that you received, and we are available for any questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hewat. Councilmember Rivera.
Yeah, I'd ask that we move the January 22nd date, because it just doesn't work for me. I'm just kidding.
I second his emotion, his motion. Actually, October 14th is not going to work for me. I can do it the week before, I can do it the week after, but the 14th is not going to work.
Honorable Mayors, Councilmember Weir, I do believe October, was that one of the months we may have had a potential conflict with the conference or otherwise?
League of Cities.
League of Cities is scheduled for October 7th through the 9th.
Okay. Well, I could do it the following week, but I can't do it the 14th.
I would defer to the council if that works for the remainder of the group. We can make that amendment via the motion.
Any comments?
I ask that amend the calendar on October 14th to October 21st. That's my motion.
Thank you. Any comments at this point? You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Council and mayor statements.
At this point, we will be receiving 30-minute comments from each council member. Colleagues, Councilmember Freeman.
I'd like to ask staff to bring back at our next meeting a resolution for the council to vote on in support of, is it the ballot, help me with the ballot measure, the ballot measure to preserve Prop 13. I think it's a ballot measure to get rid of it and double up on commercial properties, and that effort's being made again, and I hope we can gain some support just for a resolution from this council that we support preserving Prop 13. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, our council meeting is adjourned at 10:36. Thank you all for your participation.